First item is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a workshop to talk about the traffic and nuisance impacts with sand minings. So first and foremost, we'll start with our staff. We've got a couple of presentations and then we'll open the public hearing after comments or questions from up here. So Stan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for the record, Stan Bowling County Planning Director. I want to go over some background and summarize some of the items that's in the staff's report that was in the pack. It's been posted on the Internet and emailed to the interested parties group. This particular workshop is focused on traffic and nuisance impacts for mining operations. We have had in the past, in February, a mobile workshop, but we have a set of four workshops scheduled. The one last month was on groundwater and surface water discharge impacts. This morning's is on traffic and nuisances, and we have two more ahead of that, ahead of us, compatibility and notice and then compliance and enforcement with kind of a wrap-up of all the, all four workshops. I do want to just update you all and the workshop participants on three items that have occurred since the last workshop in April. First of all, the legislative session is over and there was no change in legislation with respect to preempting local regulations. We're at the same place as far as state legislation goes as when we started the workshops and the moratorium began. There was legislation that was proposed that would have, if passed, preempted certain local actions and so forth, but that died in committee. So we're where we were when we started the moratorium and the workshops in January.
Will that come back, Stan?
As far as I know, nothing ever dies, as far as legislation goes. It may very well come back next session, as possible.
It actually didn't get that close to getting enacted, actually.
Right. It died in committee. It didn't get too far.
It didn't ever get out of committee.
The second thing I want to just bring up is the, a decision on the Lake Belt mining lawsuit, a suit of, brought by basically the mining interests, went to the 11th Circuit Court in Atlanta. And basically they overturned the judge's decision in Miami and sent it back to be reviewed under certain standards. I've got some background information that we can go into that tonight, but I just wanted to let you all know that the immediate ban around some of the wellfields, the judge's decision that did that last, last summer, is gone. It's lifted for the time being, and it's going back to that judge in Miami to decide that. So that has occurred. The other thing that's occurred was at the end of April, Palm Beach County approved two large mining operations, very large, a 30-year and a 70-year mine, over 3,000 acres, over 7,000 acres for rocky materials, and just wanted to let you all know that. With respect to the topic this morning, quick history, the mined materials in Indian River County primarily sand and fill and occasionally kochina, those are the types of materials that we're dealing with. So when we look at nuisance, dust, traffic issues, it's dealing with handling those materials and extracting those materials. The history in the last, say, 30 years in the county that we've had mines for these types of materials, again, mostly sand and fill, inside the urban service area, we've had some right next to platted and occupied lots, residential lots. We've also had them outside the urban service area in remote, in ranchette areas, had them in quite a variety of circumstances. We've had small and large mines, both in terms of the area, the project site, and the excavated area, and the volume, cubic yards, material pulled, we've had quite a variety. We've had mines using unpaved haul roads, which is generally what's, what's happened probably more times than not, but also paved routes. And what's been used primarily, and this is by our code, is collector roadways. Major thoroughfare plan roadways are used for the, for the haul routes. The trend over the last several years has been toward larger mines and on the edge of the urban service area. I think there's a few reasons for that. You know, there aren't large sites inside the urban service area as much as there used to be, and this is just where, tend to be where, where the mines try to be, are located near where the demand is. So we have them on the edge of the urban service area at this point. We've had, project by project, quite a variation in the frequency and the type of complaints over the years. You know, we can answer questions on that, but we went into that and gave some examples in the, in the staff report and the backup. And it seems that the site management has varied quite a bit by project, sometimes depending on the size and so forth, but you know, we've had various types of, of operations run and various degrees of responsiveness. And we've had some well-run operations certainly in the county. I think we've, you know, we've seen some of that, some of those types of good management techniques on the mobile workshops. Traffic issues and complaints, wanted to summarize some of those that we've had. We've broken it down into several categories. One is just the adequacy of the road surfaces itself. That'd be both paved and unpaved. We've had breakdowns on paved sections of haul routes as well as unpaid. Some of the issues have been the widths, the dimensions, and the design of the, the road itself, culverts and bridges, and just basic condition and maintenance over the life of the mine. One thing to keep in mind, and this was mentioned, the analysis, that with, with mining operations, sometimes you have pretty dramatic swings in the amount of traffic that's generated by the mine in terms of a dump truck, depending on when delivery, you know, if there's a, there's a big delivery sort of situation, you may have a higher peak obviously at that time than, than at other times. Other types of complaints, we've had tracking, actually tracking material out of the mine onto the, onto the haul routes and spillage occasionally. Especially on, on paved routes, we've had some complaints on that. Truck operations and driver behavior. We've had complaints about that from time to time. As far as the nuisance types of complaints, which we would categorize for this purposes of this discussion, dust and noise. Dust from onsite activities, we've had some complaints about wind-driven erosion, especially across exposed areas of sites. This has actually happened probably more on the coastal sand ridge than in other areas. Also, we've had some dust complaints from, from the hauling, just truck goes over a dry roadway, lots of, lots of dust, and then the dust becomes wind-driven, providing a nuisance. Noise from onsite pumps and equipment, we've had at different, different mining operations over time, and we've had some complaints of off-site haul truck noise, not as much as some of the onsite complaints. The regulations for these types of issues, traffic, dust control, noise, that sort of thing, there are some federal and state standards, especially with respect to traffic, and some with wind-driven erosion, but most of the regulations on these types of issues really are at the local level and have a greater effect on the issues. Staff has analyzed our existing regulations and found deficiencies, that was in our, our analysis, and have suggested, actually in the backup, 14 potential regulation, either additions or changes being more specific in some areas, for instance. And just a summary of some of those, one would be establishing a comprehensive dust control plans, analyzing and having specific measures for mitigating equipment noise, actually putting more specifics in about haul route maintenance standards, both for paved and unpaved roads, and having maintenance agreements. And sometimes, in staff's opinion, that may be important, where you have shared haul routes and you actually have more than one mining operator impacting a road. Paving haul routes, establishing a threshold and factoring in cumulative impacts, when should a haul route, at what point should it be paved? At what point can an unpaved road be maintained safely, but then there's some threshold where it needs to be paved? And then specific truck operation measures, those are some ways to, whether, you know, at least indirectly, get a little more control over the actual truck operations and what the drivers do. Random monitoring along a haul route of law enforcement, more measures on security forfeiture for traffic violations, these sort of things. I'm summarizing, and this is in our, in our analysis, of some of the things that, that could be done. I did want to point out, just in my remarks here, that, that again, I think we've had operations in the county that have had good management practices, and we can probably learn some things from those that, that aren't specifically in our code right now, but are actually done in practice out there. We have two more presenters. First will be Chris Moore, our Assistant Public Works Director, to go over traffic and road issues. And then I'd ask Chuck Kramer with Fisher and Sons to describe some of the practices for dust and noise control and road maintenance and traffic issues that, that he's seen through his experience, and ask him even to comment on what's worked and what's not worked. And then after, after we hear from these gentlemen, it would be a time for question answers from the, from the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'll turn it over to Chris Moore at this point.
Okay. Good morning, Chris.
Good morning. Oh, there we go. Good morning. I'm Chris Moore, Assistant Public Works Director. Let me bring up the PowerPoint here. This morning, I'm going to go into a little bit more detail on the, on traffic, how we calculate traffic for mines and some of the nu, I'll reiterate some of the nuisance impacts, at least from a public works perspective. Things I'll be talking about would be the traffic impact study that's done for mining uses, how trip generation, how we calculate the traffic associated with the mine use, the trip distribution, in other words, once we calculate that amount of truck traffic, how it's distributed out onto the roadway grid, and then again, some of the nuisance issues that Public Works has been involved in. First, the traffic impact study. For mining uses, the traffic impact studies are done just as they would be for any particular land use. In other words, the land development regulations that are in the code also apply, and any, any land use that's projected to have over 100 trips per day must prepare a traffic impact study. And as part of that procedure, they come in and have, and hold a pre-study meeting with the county traffic engineering staff. And in that pre-study meeting, we look at, we review Chapter 952, the traffic provisions of the code, how to prepare a traffic impact study, what kind of data collection they have to do, and basically what format the, the study has to be done in. Trip generation, normally with any project, the trip generation rate for a particular land use, whether it's commercial or residential, would, would come from the I T E Trip Generation Manual, this book right here. And it, in the I T E Trip Generation Manual, there's just about every possible land use that you can think of, and they've got hundreds of studies that back up the rates that they recommend. Mines are a little bit different in that they're production-oriented. They're almost like a, like a factory in that they produce a, a, some goods that are then carted away. And I, you know, when you look at it from a factory perspective, it reminds me back in, back in the 80s when I did a, a study for, a traffic study for Great Lakes Steel down in Down River, Detroit, and it was very easy to do because all you did was, you looked at the production schedule, and when steel went out the back door, there was a truck waiting to carry it away, and we just counted up how much the production was, and we were able to calculate the trip generation of that factory. Well, mines kind of operate in the same way, it's that, it's just that the trips are depending on certain site-specific criteria, basically the, the size of the mine, the operating hours of the mine, and the lifespan of the mine. To give you an example, this is a trip generation table that was done for the Wild Turkey Sand Mine. And if you look in this area right here, it goes through the calculation that we use to, to determine how many trucks this mine would produce. And going down through the calculations, we use 52 weeks a year times five haul days per week, and that, that ends up with 260 haul days per year. And then you factor in the mine life, which is 10 years, times the 260 days per year. So you get a total of 2,600 hauling days for that particular mine. And then you take the volume of the mine in cubic yards, which is just a little over 10 million cubic yards, and you divide by the number of haul days, which was 2,600, and you come up with about 4,000 cubic yards a day that that mine will process. And you divide that-
Chris, may I, so when you do the cubic yards, is that based on all phases? I mean, that's, you don't break this into phases? That's the anticipation of the total mine?
No, that's the total- Exactly. Total capacity of the mine. Then you take that cubic yards per day, divide it by 14, which is the estimated cubic yards per truck that a dump truck would carry, and you end up with 288 tricks, trucks per day, or trips per day. Now, again, that's the total number of trucks that would visit the mine and would enter the mine and leave in a day. So to get, to convert that to trip ends, you have to multiply by two. So you get 576 trip ends for that mine per day. And then we add in a, at the last there, we add in a 15% safety factor, knowing that there's kind of an ebb and flow to mining operations. They'll have busier times and less busy times. So to be conservative, we add 15% and call it 663 trips per day. Now, that's, that's a daily trip figure, so calculating that 10% of the daily figure would occur in the peak hour, we take 10% of that and call that 66 peak hour trips for that mine. So there's 66 peak hour trips in the mornings, 66 in the afternoon, so that's 33 trucks in and 33 trucks out during one hour. Looking at trip distribution, normally with any trip distribution model for a traffic impact study, we look at the particular land use and then we apply the FSU TMS, which is a gravity model that spreads that traffic out onto the, out onto the roadway grid. And we also, we also do that with mines. We apply the same trip distribution model. It's a little bit different though in that we have to look at, we have to think about how a mine operates. Typically, the mined products, whether they're sand or rock, they have to be carried to the buyers. So the trip lengths and the destinations might be a little bit different because they're driven by the market. But generally, we'll distribute that over the whole county and outside of the county, depending on where we think this, this mine is going to send their products to. Once the, the safe haul route is identified, all of that traffic that's going to be generated by the mine is, is loaded onto the different roadway segments or links, and also the different intersections in the county. Those intersections and links are then checked for capacity problems, whether or not they adhere to the county level of service standards, just as any, any traffic impact study would have to do. As far as the nuisance issues, some of the mine complaints that have been received by Public Works, I would say the number one is road conditions, as Stan mentioned, rutting in the roadway, bumps due to lack of grading, poor roadway surface conditions, and obviously dust. Number two would be, would have to do with the truck driver behavior. Speeding complaints is a common one, trucks making unsafe passing maneuvers, and careless or reckless driving is another issue that we often get complaints on. And then lastly, and one that we don't get as many complaints on, would be noise. And this has to do more with the operating hours of the mine and the, the use of jake brakes on the larger diesel trucks. And I have a, this, this is a graph of the noise level for trucks versus passenger cars, and you can see here, there's about a 15 decibel difference in the typical noise emanating from a passenger car, which tops out at about 67 decibels, and a diesel truck, which tops out at about 82 decibels. So there's quite a, quite a difference in just, and these are, these are equal operating conditions on a level roadway at 50 miles per hour with the sound instrument set at 50 feet away.
Chris, when you talk about the, the noise from the trucks, you, you referenced jake brakes. Are you going to get into that? Because I am not that mechanically inclined.
Yes, actually, I have a, I have an example of that that I'm going to show at the end of this.
Thank you.
But this, this is a profile, a sound profile of a truck, and it shows that of those 82 decibels that can be reached, they come from different components of the truck. And you see over here on the left, the tires is a certain decibel level, 77, the engines at 75, but what's interesting about this is the highest noise level comes out of the location of the exhaust stack. And that's usually, you know, nine, 10 feet above the roadway, depending on the type or style of truck and the exhaust piping. But the highest noise level actually comes from almost the high point of the truck. And I do have a, an example of jake brakes, if I can add to it here. Jake brakes are, they're named after a company that invented the, it's actually an engine brake or a compression brake that is typical on large diesel engines, and it, all it is is a, when a diesel engine operates, it uses valves that bring in the air and the fuel. They don't have spark plugs in diesel engines, but what they do when they activate a jake brake is they push a button, usually in the cab, and then it, it cuts off the fuel supply and uses the cylinders as an air compressor to slow down the, the speed of the truck without doing the wear and tear on the air brakes. And it actually extends the life of the air brakes if you use the jake brakes like the manufacturers specify. But let me get to an example here.
That's set 10, Donna. Right.
Right, but I was thinking that there are a lot of people in the public who got understanding of that. That's a pretty quiet truck.
Well, we don't have a zone on here. It's a jake brake though.
You hear it, what, it has a, oh.
Do you want to do it again?
I can do that again, but click and clack would probably shudder it.
The Taffet Brothers would love that. It's not as noisy as it went in the test run.
Chuck, would you describe it kind of as an, as an engine rev? I mean, the way it goes?
Okay, here we go.
There you go.
Somehow the mute button was inexplicably on there. If you listen to the backside though, it's even louder. There you go. As you can see, it's kind of a staccato noise, it's almost like a deceleration noise that you'll hear, but it's a lot louder than a transmission brake would be. And that, that pretty much concludes what I have. I'll let the next, I'll let Mr. Kramer go now.
That, that box was all the notes I was going to discuss with you people today, but I didn't want to bore you to death.
I thought it was, I thought it was sandwiches for lunch.
I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here, and I'd like to just address some of the issues that they've talked about already, and how practices that we apply under the current ordinances to minimize dust, sand, blowing sand, noise, site itself, which includes the appearance, haul roads, and the trucks, which seems to be the hot issue always is the trucks. As far as dust and sand control, when you look to set up a mine or a mine site, and of course, you have a 20-acre phase that you want to excavate, the first consideration is you try to minimize the amount of stripping on the site that you do to avoid barren, exposed earth. And for the most part, even in phasing, you can, you can alleviate a lot of your problems by only stripping those areas where you're actively rimming and excavating and leaving the future areas, even if they're in the same phase, in a more or less virgin state until you have to dig into those areas. You save the strippings, you utilize them, they have a lot of natural ground growth. And as far as creating vegetative cover quickly, that's the easiest way, is whatever you have disturbed, recover it with the strippings, water it, re-vegetate it, and eliminate the blowing sand or the blowing dust. Access roads are the same way. You do minimum amount of stripping to get the width of the access road you need and the stabilization. And when you stabilize your internal access roads, you use a morrow and sand mix, you don't use a concentrated morrow mix because as it tends to dry out, the top of it creates a lot of dust. You have to water it regularly, a few times a day on your internal roads. You don't oversaturate because when you oversaturate, the next problem you have is off-site tracking, where the material wants to leave the site. So, you know, it's not like you go out and create a site and you just start to dig and you, and you go forward. That's not how it is. You actually have to have a process by which you create the excavation, minimize the stripping to barren earth, and minimize your truck tracking out onto the highways, okay? You minimize your truck movement on the site. You don't want trucks driving around the site a half a mile to go to a pile they can go 500 feet to get to. When you build your infrastructure, you base it on that, the less truck movement, the less equipment movement, the less dust to generate, okay? You keep your loading areas well-watered and compacted. You excavate directly onto the truck whenever possible. Two reasons for that. First off, it's the most efficient way and the most cost-effective way to do it. Second off, it avoids stockpiling when you don't have to.
Chuck, let me ask you a question real quick. Are you, you're, are you speaking specifically about ordinance requirements or are you talking-
This is how we function now under your current ordinance.
Fish your practices. Yeah, okay.
And, and I want you to kind of understand what we do now under your current ordinance, because I think you'll find in a lot of instances, it's pretty adequate. And that's why I've kind of described, and this is how we configure our mines, okay? Stockpiles. The dredge stockpiles usually aren't a problem, they tend to be wet, and during the process of dredging, you don't have too much in line of blowing sand, you don't have too much in the production of dust. On established stockpiles, believe it or not, the configuration of the pile plays a big part in how it reacts to wind effects. When you stockpile, particularly with a dredge stike, when it has a protruding rim on it, when you're finished and move on to another phase, if you remove the vertical hard edges of that pile, in other words, you round the top of the pile off, it cuts the amount of material blown off that top of that pile to virtually nothing. And the reason is, when you have a vertical riser on that pile, the wind tends to undercup it, force the sand up, and your continuing winds above the pile blow it away. And we found out over years of, of constructing dredge piles and watching how they function, that if you change the configuration of the pile and minimize your height, which 25 feet is plenty high enough, that you can curtail that blowing sand issue. Water works better than anything on the site. You want to minimize dust, whatever you can put water on, you put water on. Keep a water truck on the site, you water anything that you can get access to, and at times during a dry period, sometimes even try to water some of the vegetative parts of the site to keep the ground cover. And that, that's about it on the dust and sand control that we do presently. Noise. First thing to do with a site, construct a six-to-eight foot barrel around the entire site. Try to get it vegetated as rapidly as possible. That's the number one thing you can do is a noise buffer, okay? On the equipment, you maintain the exhaust systems, and you also, the compartment shields and insulation, because a lot of the noise you get from equipment is also mechanical. It's not just exhaust energy noise, it's mechanical noise. But you just saw a little example of that. You add quiet-type turbo mufflers to your stationary equipment, and that's where the box comes into play. These have become pretty prevalent in the last five to 10 years. This is a turbine-type muffler. This is a turbine-type muffler. And what this muffler basically does is an engine will have a pulse as it operates. And those straight-through baffle mufflers will transfer that pulse right on through the stack and out into the atmosphere. And that's a large part of the exhaust noise that you hear. This technology uses a rotary chamber. And what it does, it breaks that harmonic pulse inside the chamber before it releases it into the atmosphere. These can make these units up to 70% less decibel production. Very expensive, they have a lifetime of about two years. This is your neighbor's best friend.
How expensive are they, Chuck?
600 to 1,200, depending on what the size of the outlet is and what the engine volume is.
Joe, is that for gasoline engine right there, right?
This is for diesel.
That's for diesel?
Mm-hmm. And on the hydraulic pumps, this is the most efficient unit you can use. It makes a drastic difference. We've had de-watering projects located adjacent to residential that people didn't know the pump was there.
What about, we talked at one of the other meetings about burmaging or burying the pump, you know?
Absolutely. We do that as a standard. And I think just about everybody does. And if for anything else, it's, it has some visual value anyway.
I know when we were at Dickinson, that we, the pumps they had buried down in the ground, you could hardly hear from the road.
Yeah, and in a lot of cases, when you're de-watering, the closer you get to your suction point, you're better off anyhow. So as you bench down, you bench your pump with the water levels. And eventually you end up in the excavation, which, you know, the desirable thing if you're loading directly on a truck is once you're in the excavation, you not only have the pump in the excavation, you have the equipment in the excavation, subsurface, and the trucks for the most part until they leave the site.
Those mufflers that you have there, Joe, are used on, not on the trucks, but on the standing equipment, right?
Standing equipment, yeah. Yep.
Chuck, what's the name of that again?
This is a turbo-type muffler. There's two or three manufacturers. This one's manufactured by a company called OWL. OWL, that's in the O-W-L. And it's a pretty efficient unit, and they're, like anything else, here in Florida, there's some durability issues. You have to count on the fact that every two years, you're going to replace it. But it's definitely more compatible with uses where you have some residential, you know, at a fairly close distance. It definitely quiets them way down.
Now, that, you say you're using it on pumps and that type of equipment. That's also used on trucks?
There's two manufacturers now, I think International Harvester is one of them, that have gone to a, and Mack for a while, they used them with turbine-style mufflers such as this. But it hasn't become that popular with trucks yet. I think it will as time goes on. But Mack and International had used them, and they had some pretty good success on city units. That's what the big thing was, city units that had, under the truck, exhaust outlets. And they were outrageously loud. And they went to a turbo-style muffler, and it cut the noise to decibel emission in half. So, but I don't think you're going to see it now, particularly since many trucks are using catalytic converters and particulate traps. I don't think it's going to be necessary. I don't think you're going to find it trucks now because of the complexity of the exhaust systems on them. They're becoming more and more exhaust quiet. If you add a particulate trap and a catalytic converter and a muffler to a truck, a good part of the noise that you're hearing from that truck's not the exhaust system, you're just hearing the mechanical noise of the engine and the tires on the road.
Well, you're referring to the technology on new trucks, what we're finding on the roads in this area, that these trucks are not new, these trucks are relatively old. And is there anything that can be done with them to mitigate the noise problem?
Well, I think that, you know, as a truck's produced and as a truck is put on the road, with a vertical exhaust stack dissipating the exhaust energy vertically and not horizontally, they're fairly quiet. I think what happens as time goes on, you have trucks owned by individual owners who modify those systems and change those systems, because I don't know if they just like the noise or what. But I think if you stay with the stock configuration of that truck, it is not bad. It's when you alter those configurations, is when, you know, the equation changes, it becomes loud.
And I understand one of the main reasons for altering the configuration is the fuel efficiency. And that's becoming a big factor now.
I think, I don't think that's really a valid argument as far as to alter the exhaust configuration on modern diesel engines. And I'll say, within the past 20 years, turbocharged diesel engines aren't that responsive to exhaust modification.
In some cases, you'll be harming the, in many cases, because of back pressure changes and it's a very complex formula.
Correct. Some turbochargers are a little better functioning with some minimal back pressure.
They're optimized out of the factory. You start messing with them, they lose efficiency.
Right. They may think they're improving the efficiency of the truck, but I don't think so. I think in, to a large degree, it'll either be unchanged or maybe a little less efficient.
There are a lot of old timers out there still think they can do it.
Yeah, I agree. And, you know, I can't speak for everybody in the trucking industry, but I think some people have some, you know, some misconceptions about what makes a truck run better or what makes it function better. And I think some of their misconceptions.
Nowadays, it's different. That and just, probably just sheer maintenance on the system. I mean, it's, if you get.
Yeah, well, the new systems are very expensive. Now, the particulate scrubbers and the catalytic converters are becoming very expensive. I think they'll be less inclined to alter those.
But I mean, the reality is trucks as a whole are just loud. I mean, over-the-road trucks, trucks.
Yeah, you're going to have a certain amount of noise associated with that. And I, I think that as time has gone on, they've become quieter. I mean, from the time I was, I was young, which I'm not going to tell you how old I am, but I think they have become much quieter than they were through the 70s, the late 60s, the 70s, the 80s. I think they've become much quieter, not as a result of, well, some federal legislation has made them become mechanically quieter. But I think basically because of the modifications to the engines themselves to make them more efficient, they've become quieter.
That's why they call them trucks, right?
Well, to some degree. I mean, we look at them as a necessity. We're truck-dependent.
Right.
So, you know, I look at both sides of the equation, which I get to in a little bit. I don't want to bore you people, so I want to kind of keep moving along.
Keep on going, Chuck.
Okay.
You're doing good.
He knows you have a limited attention span.
That's right.
The angle of your exhaust systems on your stationary equipment, I'm talking about dredges, loaders, dozers, that angle's vitally important. Vertical's the name of the game. Dissipate the noise up. Don't dissipate it at 45 degrees towards your property borders. Don't dissipate it horizontally. The idea is to get the noise up. If you're buffered and burned and the noise is up, you don't hardly hear it. But you have to adhere to that policy. Okay? You control your truck speeds and your equipment speeds around the site. Nobody wants to hear banging tailgates. Nobody wants to hear bodies slamming up and down. And there's no reason why they should be speeding inside your site anyhow. Use of Jake brakes in a site, not even necessary. I can't even fathom why somebody would want to do that. We don't allow it.
In Florida, maybe going downhill.
I think that's an issue more off-site, like when they're driving on main roads.
And we try to control that to some degree too, because that's unnecessary. Burmaging around the pumps, as you said, okay? Again, excavating directly onto the truck from the lower elevations is a definite noise killer. You're down below ground surface, doesn't tend to emanate from the site at all. Okay? Maintain your setbacks, big deal. Operate your equipment within your setbacks, stay off the property lines, and maintain your operating hours. The number one thing that upsets people is when you're operating outside your hours. That's a big one. Haul roads. If you're going to join a paved road, it's always been our practice to pave 150 feet of the adjoining road and to create an apron. Okay?
Is that a code requirement, Bob, or is that just a courtesy that they?
The code allows Public Works basically to require that as a condition. They can require paved aprons and ramps and such for connecting. It's been done by.
At your discretion. It's not a code.
What they're doing on 86th is actually further down site, they're paving the apron where the turn is, so on the next mine.
Right, and we usually will want that apron just to prevent the spill out onto the.
Okay, I'm going to go back again now. That was a good dance, but you didn't answer the question.
It's not a quote requirement.
No.
Not specifically.
The requirement says that it can be required, but it doesn't say that it has to be done.
Along with your paving and your aprons, you have to inspect every day to look to see, A, that they're not short-running the corners of the apron, they installed against the paved right-of-way, because what happens with that is they'll start to break the pavement off at the right-of-way. Okay? You have to make sure you have storage inside to get the trucks off the streets, they don't park on the shoulder of the right-of-way. That's the second thing that destroys the edge of the right-of-way pavement, is parking on the edge. We try to make storage, I try to get in my head, figure out how many trucks I need to have storage for in the mornings to get them off the road. That's why we try to extend the driveways, make a situation where they're not pulling up and sitting at a gate, they need to be able to get in. Okay? Grading of your stabilized roads, okay? We install rocking areas of stabilized roads that we feel aren't going to be able to sustain the traffic. We just did some on 86th, particularly where they stop, particularly where they turn. In that case, I'm leaving our site onto a stabilized road. And when we looked at the road and the stabilization, we decided to rock it from our driveway to the intersection of Oslo before I would take a chance on it. The reason I say that is it's easier to maintain that road than it is to rebuild the road. If you destroy it once, a stabilized road, it's hard to go out and reestablish it. So if you get it in the beginning and then you maintain it, you don't have to rebuild it, which I don't want to be down one day because of the road. You have to look at it two or three times a day, jump on the trouble spots, it's not that hard to do. You have to know when to stop. If the weather becomes ridiculous, if it rains and saturates the road, you have to know when to say, okay, that's enough. Because the same scenario arises. If you continue, the next day you'll rebuild the road, you won't grade the road. So you have to know when to say, okay, that's enough of that, and tomorrow's another day. And in the course of that, the next day, you may have to grade the road prior to even getting on the road. But I guess it all goes back to trying to save the road. Okay? You can't overwater it. You don't want to overwater a stabilized road, because what happens at that point is you become the factor that makes the road fall apart. You have to have a little delicate balance between stabilizing and adding the right amount of moisture to the road or saturating the road and turning it into nothing but ruts. So you have to know, you have to know what the limits are. Okay? You grade only when the surface is suitable. You don't grade it immediately after a rain within the next hour. When you just create a mud hole by grading it, and you're not going to get it right anyhow if it's that wet. As far as facilities on paved roads, and I think you kind of brushed on this with me the other day, Stan, about what we would do as far as off-site maintenance on paved roads. And I think other than adjacent to our entrances, we've never really had to do that. 77th is still an active pit on that road, and we didn't have any grig and culvert issues there. And Schuman, which is now has been completed, that was on that road for years. And once again, we did the same thing. We had a wide apron, a lot of driveway, we didn't have any track. Matter of fact, I don't think we ever had a problem with Schuman. But I think what happens at that point, we're kind of out into the county's realm of what you would want a contractor to do on your road or our road or anything. We've never had a problem where we even had to discuss that with the county. We look at those access issues when we're going to acquire a piece of property or look at it for a mining facility, believe me. I don't go look at the facility first and then look at the roads. I look at the roads inclusive of where I'm going to put the facility. I think it has a big bearing on how you approach, you know, the construction of the facility and how you provide the truck access. And I think, I've looked at projects at times, I've looked at projects and how you would get out of the projects, and I've looked at some features on those exit ways from those projects and decided not to do the project. And I think you have to do that. I think it's part of that process. I don't know how you answer the question of, well, you know, if there's a deficient road leading to a proposed facility, do you deny the person the right to build the facility? I don't know. I think that that would cause problems on both sides of the spectrum, because in the case of having the material in the place that it's located and having to have a way to get out, do you deny them because the road that has been there for 40 or 50 years is deficient?
How, what would you define, what would you say is a deficient road?
Roads that don't exhibit good base material characteristics. There are some in the county, and I think Chris can agree with me on this, there's some that the base material is minimal at best.
I mean, I was thinking with Dennis Smith, they were hauling for, was it Grand Harbor down 49th?
Main Street.
Yeah, they, I mean, it was obvious that 49th couldn't hold the traffic, and it brought it up. But it was prob, we probably knew it was deficient before then, I think.
Well, and the thing, and I bounced back to that, you know, and I play that back and forth in my mind, because at what point is one individual entity responsible for that? I mean, here you have a road, 49th had been there a long time. And, you know, granted, I'm sure the truck traffic caused a deterioration of the road, but then again, the road wasn't an excellent road to start with. And I think to some degree, you're seeing that on another road now. And, you know, those trucks, they're not out there riding around for free. They're paying, they're paying to ride those roads, just like anyone here that drives a car. I mean, I think a vehicle registration in Florida runs anywhere from $25 to $75. I think the average triax of registrations is about 1,200 bucks. They pay a highway use tax of $600 a year. They pay federal fuel taxes, they pay state.
I think though, Chuck, I mean, I think that we have this in, I don't know how, in the LDRs, we talk about collector roads. I mean, you've got, we've got collector roads, and the theory there is that collect, the main collector roads are going to be sufficient. It's getting, when you get away from a collector road, that you may or may not have a problem. I mean, I'm not sure, you know, like you've got 58th and 66th and 74th eventually, and 82nd, I don't know, 69th, 53rd probably is going to be a collector road. I mean, they're roads defined as collector roads, but I don't know, you know, how they do, that's something we're going to talk about, I guess, in a little while, so it's good that you brought it up.
Yeah.
I mean, it's going to be, it's an issue.
Sorry about that.
Sure. That's all right.
We tend to regulate the frequency of trucks on the haul routes immediately surrounding my facility or our facility in the loading sequence. I don't want to bunch up massive number of trucks and send them loose at one time. So basically, as we establish some kind of rhythm in the morning to bust the trucks up, we'll stretch them out to the point where we don't have constantly, constantly, people seeing constant trucks, constant trucks on that same route. We try to break it up, we have a loading frequency, and basically control that by the traffic inside the mine and the speed in which you load the trucks. We do that for a number of reasons. Also, the wear on the road, the dust, et cetera, et cetera. All those things play into that control.
Chuck, let me ask you another question now. You have your own mines, you operate, you're adjusting those schedules of truck movement, et cetera. You watch the roads, the ingress roads yourself, and then maintain them and keep them in that, keep them with the quality so that you don't have to redo a road. What happens when you have a small mine that has five or six independent haulers that are coming in and going out? What would your suggestion be for the control so that you would have a Fisher kind of control to that type of mine?
Well, I think that we've had small mines in the past where mostly outside vendors purchased material. And I think you can make your outside trucks live by the same rules as your house truck. And the reason I say that is if they're out there on my haul route, and they're going to go 60 miles an hour on a 30 mile an hour road, the simplest solution I have to solve the problem is eject them from the facility. We've done it. And in a case of residential complaints of people that drive the road, there wasn't first chance, second chance, third chance, it was immediately. We're in business to sell fill, make no mistake. But you don't sell fill by creating bad publicity and driving away other potential customers. So if I have to eliminate one party from the scenario to make it work, then we eliminate the one party. I can't speak for how other people want to run. I can't speak for how other people want to run their facilities, but I can almost guarantee you that they would probably be of the same mindset. They wouldn't want to drive away other potential customers, or risk a bad publicity, dealing with a vendor who didn't want to comply with their rules.
Does staff, does the ordinances require the kind of control that Fisher has to an independent small mine?
I think that it is going to be difficult to try to legislate and directly control that particular issue. What we tried to point out in the staff report, and just kind of develop this question a little bit more, I think there are things that can be done indirectly. I think you could have, you could have penalties. Well, first of all, random enforcement is one issue that we suggested. You could have a mining operator pay for some random enforcement from the sheriff's office, and then if there are traffic violations of a driver, that could be grounds for pulling security that the mining operator has posted, and that would, that would put an incentive in the ordinance to make sure that a mining operator wants to manage his or her operation, so that they don't, they don't have drivers like that. Those are the kinds of, you know, try to come up with some sort of measurable, objective, you know, standards that, if there are violations of them, you can, you can tie it back into security or something like that, to give an incentive.
Would road maintenance, what Chuck's talking about, where he watches the condition of the road, and doesn't allow it to deteriorate to the point of having to redo the road, would that be a bondable issue, or how would you bring the road back up if it was destroyed from a small independent?
Well, I think it goes back to monitoring. Either someone has to monitor it, either the mine operator does, or the county does, but I think one possibility would be to raise the road maintenance bond. Right now, it's sitting at ten thousand dollars per mile. The higher that is, the more incentive there is for the mine operator to closely monitor the road surface conditions.
But that didn't any time fall under the code enforcement? Would that be a code enforcement issue, or how?
It would become that, yeah, later.
Yeah, who, how do you detect it? That's the point.
Yeah, I think if you, if you define in the ordinance more specifics about what the maintenance plan is, specifically for that, that particular project, and departures from that, you know, would constitute a violation. That would be a coordination effort between, you know, Public Works and Code Enforcement. When those, when those are observed, that's a violation. And there may be some or all of the security that's subject to forfeiture if it's not filed.
Chris, in the current, not regulations, but in your policies of dealing with road maintenance or mines, do we really, do you really get into what that maintenance is going to be, or do you just walk it through verbally, or talk about it? You have no written agreements, correct?
No, it's more of a, it's complaint driven, basically, right now.
It's public turns it in, like.
But I mean, if you had, if there was a way to walk through, and Chuck, we outlined certain things, and then, you know, what he's going through is really, if the industry has it, is it would be best management practices, their recommendations, and those generally are written in a book that would be recommended, and I'm not sure if the mine, do you all have a VMP manual? I mean, we have it in Citrus now, I didn't know whether you all had it, but if we started writing through, writing down parts of this criteria, it probably would unentangle any discussion. I mean, it would make it pretty clear whether you're doing this or not. I mean, there's always judgment in whether the road is in good condition, or the dust is high or not, but I think it would, would make it fairly clear.
But I think you could, you could probably spell that out in best management practices, and maybe, you know, we have them establish a haul route, and we could put, tie those best management practices into maintaining that haul route, in some way.
Right, I mean, there's certainly a way, I would think, to get there, so you could eliminate a lot of the arguing.
The trouble, again, falls back to monitoring the was and the now condition, as to what the road condition was, and then, six months later, you've got to have some way to monitor that.
Right. Okay, Chuck, anything else, or?
Yeah, I'm not done, I'm not done.
That's okay, we're patiently waiting.
I'm almost done. Loading of the trucks, okay? Proper loading of the trucks doesn't result in fill laying in the road, doesn't result in fill laying on cars, et cetera, et cetera. Loading with a loader does create some mounting. However, it's a visual thing, the toe of the load is usually below the sideboards, if you have an adequate tarping system, shouldn't be a problem. If you maintain adequate speeds with the trucks when you're cornering, or doing anything else, that shouldn't be a problem. I don't think that you could say, "Okay, well, we're going to allow six inches below the board loads," it's not realistic.
What you're saying is, you think it would be hard for us to establish a written criteria on what the load would height, or?
Yeah, it would be hard, and I think mainly because of truck configurations today, their volume is based on heap load, not water level, because of the configurations, the actual configurations, and I think that you would, it would be very tough to have a formula, and if you did have a formula that would significantly reduce what they haul, then it'd just lead to other, it's just like a.
The key, the key is adequate tarping, and then adequate speed control.
Right, we'll handle that. I don't think there's anything wrong with having drivers pull up before they leave the site, take two minutes, walk around a truck and look. It's a no-brainer. My company guys have to do it, okay? Tracking is prevented, obviously, by properly maintaining your inside roads. In the case of going out in paved roads, construct the aprons, don't track the mud out on the street. If you do, sweep it off. We sweep them off sometimes, even if we don't track out on the road. I have a broom, avoids a lot of problems, okay? I think you have to keep your equipment visibly acceptable, and I think that you shouldn't have a vertical junk pole rolling down the road, I don't think it's a good idea. I think it has to be mechanically safe, I think it has to be placarded as per what the county requires now. These are all common sense things, so I think you have to require your outside haulers, if they work for you, or their customers, and you have to require the same. We do, and if I have to exclude them, I exclude them. No use of air horns in the facility? Definitely no. Jake brakes, no extended idling, that upsets people. If it's adjacent to a residential area, they don't want to hear that in the morning, they don't want to hear it anytime. You have to check the trucks on the haul routes. We'll go out and look at them a couple times a day, see what's going on. If I get a complaint, then we'll send her in on that particular unit, and we'll figure out what the problem is. Most of the time, I have to say, most public complaints usually have some validity. If they, if a person is upset enough to call your office and complain about the truck, there's something to it. I don't disregard those complaints. I mean, if I get a complaint on a particular truck, and particularly people who take the time to get the unit number, or the license plate number, they didn't do that for no reason. There's a reason they did it.
They're upset.
Right.
Is there any way we could put a call number outside of a dump site, or a site like that, for a number to call?
I think, I think that the name and number is required to be on the, on the truck, I think that's how you get a lot of the calls, and that's in the regulations now, and that's pretty standard.
Of course, observing the speed limits, and, you know, other than that, all this stuff is common sense stuff. This is stuff that we do right now. We've done this in the past, I think we've been reasonably successful in it, and this is all under the current LDRs. I don't know what you want to change, I have no idea, but it's, I think that if people basically adhere to the same practices we have, for the last twenty years that I know of, that I've been here, I think they're adequate, but, you know, you have to make that decision. I just, I brushed up on the truck issue, and the cost issue, not to irritate anybody, but the fact of the matter is that, since we're truck dependent, I'm very concerned to see what those issues are going to be, and I hope we're going to talk about that a little bit more, I'd like to be able to discuss that with you, okay?
On, you mean, on the, how we regulate, or what we do with trucks?
Trucks, because we're truck dependent. I have to have those trucks, we have to have those trucks, and I understand the other side of the argument, we have trucks. And, and I just want to stay in that loop, I don't want to get out of that loop, because that's, that's a vital thing to us.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Don't go away yet, Chuck. What sort of soil stabilization do you use on site, other than water? Do you use any petroleum stabilization, or polymer stabilization, or anything?
We've tried a few of the polymer solutions, and in the traffic areas, we noticed the most was that, once it starts to scale, from the traffic loading, then you're back to square one. About the most efficient thing you can use is water.
Water.
Yeah, and it's not detrimental to anything. Some of the, some of the, we use the calcium solutions, because they tend to kill vegetation, and some of the polymer solutions, it's not even the expense, it's just that they affect that top eighth of an inch of surface, and once the traffic starts to erode that away...
You're done. Once it's cracked, it's gone.
Yeah, and I think sometimes the situation becomes worse, because you don't have the fines to bind on the next pass, and then you have these shards that start to bust up into fine dust, and it just reverses back to what it was. The best thing to use, I mean, we've tried various things, and water is just about the best thing to use, and it's plentiful.
Is there anything on the roads, like on the haul roads, obviously, once they leave the site, they're go screaming down, driving down the road, excuse me? Is there any requirement for them to stabilize any part of that other road, to keep the dust down, like, I mean, one percent of the travel is on the, on the site, the rest of the dust and the garbage that's kicked up is on the dirt roads going along?
Well, the current requirements are that they maintain the haul route, and that no hazardous traffic conditions are created.
Okay, so that's already on the books. When you say maintain, does it define maintain as anything?
No, it just gives the general, maintain the haul route.
That's important.
That means the surface of the road, not the dust, is what I'm getting at?
Right.
I think that we maintained power line road for quite a while, and it was a lot better road than we maintained it than it was prior to that, and it was nobody's fault. I mean, you know, the county has its maintenance schedule that they adhere to, and one day of rain can change that whole scenario, and we maintained it, and I think the residents were pretty happy with it. I'm right now in the process of doing the same thing on 86th.
When you say maintain, you mean grade?
Yeah, grade it. Matter of fact, yesterday, we had the grader out there, because it rained the day prior in the afternoon, I would have done my grading, but it got saturated. And to go out there with a grader when the road is just soaking wet, is, is.
Yeah, that's not, that's not realistic. Is there any, I guess, Chris, is there any minimum road width requirement for hauling to take place, as opposed to traffic, regular auto traffic?
Well, we would, we would typically have twelve foot lanes, two twelve foot lanes on a, on a two lane road, but, and I wanted to add something to what Chuck was saying, there's more to the maintenance than just running a grader. They often have to run a water truck and keep the moisture content of the road surface adequate.
That's the answer I was looking for.
Have to dress up the edges of the road, it's more than just grading. I mean, it's difficult to legislate the type of maintenance, how many passes of the water truck per day, how many passes per the grader, per grading, how many gradings per day. It typically gets down to just maintaining good road conditions.
And it's your definite, it's your definition of maintenance, because what I hear Chuck saying is, it's an enforcement problem, as far as he's concerned, and it's your definition of maintenance. So you can define it as broadly, or as narrowly as you want.
Right, I mean, the way that the ordinance, 934 is written out, gives us pretty broad enforcement, in that we can go out, and if we see something that's, we don't feel is reasonably safe and fit for travel, we can, we can deal with it with the mine operator.
And in many ways, avoiding the specificity, whatever I'm trying to say, is an advantage, because it gives you an all encompassing.
Right, it's an advantage to us.
But it also can, it also can inhibit enforcement if you don't, you know, if you make it too broad. I mean, because then they'll, enforcement, they won't enforce.
Well, that's why I say, it's got to be done with the enforcement issue, yeah.
Which we'll talk about, I'd like to do, talk about in enforcement later, but I mean, that's.
Looking at it from the operator's end, I mean, it makes sense for me to maintain it, because it's my access. You know, if I let it fall apart, I put myself out of commission.
Yeah, but you're a real person, the rest of the world may not be.
What do you do, Chris, what do we do about these roads? And I'm thinking about specifically, like, 86th, there was 82nd, a lot of these dirt roads, it may be because of the Indian River Farms Drainage District, or Sebastian, they actually slope in such a way as not to put water in the main canals. I mean, they're not, we don't drain, and the road does not run off into the canal. I'm 82nd, you've got a berm that's up, that actually is there to prevent water from going in the canal in front of where they.
The road's trapped.
And the, where the mine is, and it actually goes from east, the slope is east to west, so it goes back into where the property, the groves, or whatever, where the easements are. You know, that makes it, makes it even harder on maintenance, because the biggest complaint we had with people there was when it got wet, it got to be a mud bog out there, and 82nd gets to be like that, but you can't actually properly prepare the road, because you don't want it, you, we don't go into those canals.
Right, and it's a difficult problem for them and for us. I mean, we have to constantly grade these roads to maintain the proper cross slope, so that the.
But you can't crown it to go flow back into the canal, you, it's got to go back toward one direction, I think.
Sheet one direction, yeah.
That seems to me.
That's why it takes so many grader passes sometimes, to get the cross slope just right, so that it goes into the swale, or the water goes where the drainage is designed to go.
That was a big consideration on 86th, and I think you've probably seen it, we rocked that section, that half mile, made a big difference. And matter of fact, we graded it yesterday, and right behind us, your grader showed up to grade the south end, and we had already graded it. But, yeah, it's kind of labor intensive, when you have a sheet flow road like that, and Chris is right, you have to make multiple passes to walk the material back across the road. You know, but then again, you have a situation, you have limited right of way, I mean, there's no options, and of course, they don't want the water in the canal. 82nd's a real good example, that that road is trapped, there's a quarter of a mile that is trapped, and the only way, the solution's elevate the roadway.
Right.
Jim Davis, Public Works Director, for 82nd Avenue, there is a series of pipes on the east, east of the road, that does collect the water, and pipes it under the road back into the Sebastian River Water Control District canal. And that's characteristic of many of the roads along canals that cross slope away from the bank of the canal, so that the canal bank does not erode, but we do capture that water in pipe systems, and pipe it back under the road.
Okay, so it doesn't have to just filter through the earth, okay?
And that's, it's tricky on 82nd, because depending on who's grading the road, if they don't know where those pipes are located, they can cover the ends of the pipes, you know, we try to meet with whoever is grading or maintaining the road, and educate them on how the road is to drain, where these pipes are. Not only do you have to put a cross slope on the road, but somewhat of a longitudinal grade to get the water to these pipes. So it's, it's not an easy thing, as Chuck said, to grade many of these roads, it's very delicate, with the flat topography we have, to get that little bit of longitudinal grade to get the water to the pipes.
Okay, thank you.
Chris, does the ordinance say, you've got a mine and a primary road to get off that, get out of the mine site, then you get four or five miles away, and the truck route that's been approved goes over an asphalt road that's not very well maintained? The trucker has some responsibility for maintenance now of that asphalt road?
If it's part of his haul route, and he damages it, then we can, we can have them fix it, and it basically says that no hazardous traffic conditions can be created. If they're, if they dump fill out at an apron four or five miles away, yes, we can, we can have them come and clean it up.
But I'm talking about a poorly maintained asphalt road, and we have some, and for efficiency, you might have that as a route, as part of the route, and it's not a combination of the county now bringing that road up to a standard, so that trucking can occur, or a joint effort at maintaining it, it's the responsibility of the trucking firm to make, to bring it back?
If it's several miles away, and it's not damaged, if it's a poorly maintained road, or asphalt road that's starting to, near the end of its useful life, it's probably not something that we can tie to the mine operation, but more something that we can tie to our own maintenance program.
Do you have a program to, to bring it up to standard before the trucking begins?
Well, it would be part of our, part of our general maintenance, not something that's associated with the mine. Now, if they established a haul route, or wanted to establish a haul route, and it covered an area that we felt was in need of maintenance, we may change the haul route, and not let them use that portion, the same way we would if there was a deficient or obsolete bridge, or some bridge that had weight limitations on it, we would steer them away from that. Or we would work with them to get the bridge upgraded. Or we would work with them to get the bridge upgraded. We could do that, too. We have a lot of options with that.
Not to interrupt you, but that, that's kind of the point that I was pursuing before. I mean, some of these roads, and I think you'll have to agree, they have some unknown deficiencies as far as what lays beneath the asphalt and the base because we haven't been alive long enough to know. And I, I get a little concerned on that. They may be a mile from the, the haul route, the initial haul route or whatever, and then of course, they start to disintegrate. I'm worried about the situation whereas before you could permit a facility, would you have to go out and build a highway that's two miles away at $2 million a mile? And like anybody else or like anyone else, we look at the, the cost factor involved, you know, this would be your startup cost, or is there a way to establish the quality of the roads prior to permitting the facility or whatever? You know, I'm gonna see how all that plays out because that damage is becoming a big issue. I, I've talked to people that live on 69th that have approached me after these meetings, and they're really concerned about it. And we, as a producer, are concerned about it because 69th was overlaid, I believe, prior to the, any other facilities opening on 82nd. And, and of course, it's showing some distress, and it has some distress in some other items. And, uh, you know, just trying to see how that's gonna play out.
That's why I brought up 49th. I mean, I, you know, the reality is, is that at what point do we, is it all the sand mine trucking traffic's responsibility or is it the county's responsibility?
Right, and that's really difficult to look at.
But in looking at other counties, one of the things we could ask, one of the things we asked was for you all to look maybe at other counties. Do other counties bond out? They say, okay, with, like we do now on traffic where there's a, and Chuck would shudder at this on cost, but I mean, is there a way to percentage or allocate some kind of funding, bonding or something that says they're gonna pay a fair share of this as time goes on? And, and at some distance? Because I mean, whether we like it or not, I mean, they, there is where these trucks are wearing out parts of the roads. We, you know, I'm not sure in Citrus, we're not guilty, too, but we can't afford anything so we're gonna go make the sand miners pay for it.
Well, and then the, the other side of that is you have to be, it has to be equitable because on many of those routes, the, the dump trucks aren't the only primary carrier on there. And, you know, how do you work that out?
But I mean, but there's probably some percentage or some way to do something, Chuck. I mean, and because you've gotta speed up on six, like 69th, if we are wearing the road out, good or bad, at some point, it probably needs to be fixed faster than this county's normal cycle of repair would be. I mean, if not, I'm not sure we'd live long enough for them to come back out there and fix it. We'll get to that later, Chris.
Right, the, the trick would be to determine how much of the potential damage would be done by the sand mine operation versus existing.
And I, you know, I don't know how we're gonna do it, but I think that that's something that, as we go through the process, we're gonna be forced to look at.
And always keep in mind, again, I, I hate to repeat this, but those trucks aren't riding that road for free. They're paying for that road, too. So, you know, it's, it's a freeway, you're looking at it from three different angles. But I don't, I don't think the mining facility should bear the total cost of repairing the road. I mean, and I'm, I'm worried as I see the discussions go that it's going that way.
Just 'cause you're the target.
That worries me.
Now, my, my point, Chuck, was that it wouldn't because I, as George was saying on 41st, I'm not familiar with the damage that occurred. But obviously, the county has a responsibility to maintain that road. You do pay to use roads also. So it seems to me that it would have to be, as George was saying, some type of percentage based on a reality, as re, as close as you can get to real, but it should be joint. It shouldn't be...
Well, there'd be a lot of factors that would go into it. You gotta remember that diesel trucks typically get about four miles per gallon, so just by nature of that, they're paying a very high percentage of the gasoline tax, which also goes into that.
Yeah, one time, just, and just to put this in there, one time, a few years ago, they did a study, I think that commercial trucks in their class seven and up classes comprised about less than 20% of the overall traffic. This nationwide, they pay over 80% of the highway cost. So, you know, if you wanna proportionately, that's way out of whack. But that's the way it is. They do more damage, yes, so, but that, that's just the way it is. And that, that issue concerns me because I, I think that's gonna be a big issue that you're gonna be considering here over the next couple of months, and I like to stay with that.
Chuck, we don't really want you to sit down because we open, we're gonna ask questions, and what I'd like to see is have the staff, Chris, and you, when the public has pro, you know, questions, it may come, we may end up addressing one of you rather than someone. So hang in here, please, okay?
I'm gonna sit down now.
Thank you, Chuck. All right, anybody, you know, but this is, we kinda went, covered a broad base here. Do you all, anybody have, I'm sure, some questions built up if you'd like?
I have a question for Chuck.
Chuck, yeah. Chuck, I don't think you get to sit down yet. Chuck, you need to, we, I think there's some more questions yet to be, for you all, and then we'll open this up to the public.
Give him a chair down here.
You're welcome, Chuck, you're welcome to sit, Chuck, you're welcome to sit down here.
Permanent picture down here.
Yeah, may as well just sit there next to a microphone.
Now then, you are part of the problem.
See the secret messages.
Chuck, my question, my question is...
Mike.
My question is, hours of operation, what are your hours of operation now? And do you have, obviously, a different need, different times of the day, or, uh, more trucks in the morning and less in the evening because of they, where they have to deliver?
I think we do seven to five now as far as the trucks. And the mornings are always, your peak hours are usually the first hour and a half. You know, you get the biggest influx of trucks, and then of course, they leave, and then it starts to level off. You can establish kind of a rhythm. But the, the peak hours is the immediate morning hours, the first hour and a half, two hours.
Chuck, didn't, I don't, I was thinking we were seven to six on the mine on 82nd, but eight to five.
Seven to five on the truck, eight to five, or seven to five, I think, on the trucks.
Did we let trucks in at seven? I was thinking it was eight.
Eight to seven.
We can, we can settle the time.
Well, that's what I wanted to discuss. Now, in the afternoon, say after four o'clock, do you have any trucks going out? Because when they make their delivery, they would be arriving at, say, seven, six o'clock.
They cut off at about four, four fifteen is when they start to taper off. The only exception to that is when they work close. If they're going somewhere in the South County and they're really close, then I'll see them back for that last round, and they may come in there at four forty-five, you know. Most of the time, you start to see an appreciable decrease in trucks.
In the afternoon.
Yeah. During the course of the day, once you break up the first round and spread them out, and you have a loading cycle that decides how rapidly they get loaded, then you'll start to see those visible trucks tail off. And during the course of the day, believe it or not, it, it just doesn't become that noticeable. Those trips don't become that noticeable because you, you do your best not to bunch up the trucks. First off, it's inconvenient for me when they bunch up.
Sure.
I wanna spread them out, uh, because then they get in there, and once they start to back up, you never can stop backing them up. And the second thing is that it's a, it's a better traffic control situation. They're not out there, truck after truck after truck after truck, you know. You try to be, you try to be friendly with your neighbors.
All right. In our current regulations, what, do we have a time? We don't have an hours limit now, right?
Yeah, the limits in the, in the existing code is basically 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM for weekdays for hauling off-site, and then the onsite activity can, can go till 6:00 PM. They can wrap up onsite.
That's five days a week, though.
Five days a week, and that's, that's the timeframe that's set out in the code for if you're adjacent to a residentially designated area, or you may remember, we changed the code several months ago to also apply in, in kind of ranchette areas as well, treat them kind of like residential areas. So that's what we've established.
Right, and now except in case of emergencies, such as a hurricane or a road, uh, a sinkhole or something, you may need it.
Sure, if you've got some kind of emergency situation, this is, this is a normal operation.
Chuck, is most of your hauling done for local in-county work as in fill for construction? Or do you haul a lot out of counties?
I'd say primarily, most of it's in the county. Matter of fact, you know, the core of our business for years was in the northern end of the county. And then, uh, you know, as the development boom came and we had moved back into the southern end of the county, though I'd say 90% of our better, it's in the county.
Is it construction fill or is it road-based material?
Fill. Some drain field sand, too. We do drain field sand, but the bulk of it's fill. And, and I'm gonna remind you this, too. When you look at different types of projects and, and different types of materials, in the case of sand or even coca, the mining process is the same. It, it, there's no variation there. It's dewater and dig. And in the case of sand, you know, you can also dredge, which we do both.
You know where I'm going with this because the coca thing is what started all this, and coca is gonna be a road base, not, uh, construction fill.
Yeah, and when you look at the coca process as far as mining the coca, other than the processing, which, which really, I've done both. The processing is a relatively simple process. It doesn't create any more of a problem when it's done correctly than just mining sand or dredging sand. And it usually occurs at a shallower depth. A lot of times, those pits are only 30, 35 feet deep. So, you know, I don't, I don't personally understand what the big fuss is, but, you know, there are some water issues that were raised here, and, and we all, you know, I look at those things, too. Believe me, I'm, I'm an avid researcher when it comes, I enjoy what I do. I research it all the time. And, uh, coca mining is really basically side-by-side with sand miners. Not much difference.
Well, there's no politics involved, you understand.
Any other, any other questions of one of them before I open the public hearing? Any other thoughts or...
Where's most, where's most of the coca located in Indian River County?
I don't think we know.
This is the first coca mine we've had in Indian River County.
Basically, west of 82nd Avenue.
Yeah.
And I think there's some deposit to the south, uh, west of 95. And basically, if you follow the lineup from Fort Pierce...
Right.
And you look at those locations along Indrio Road, and you're to cut an arrow slightly to the northeast, and that, that same...
That same band runs there.
Whatever the formation was, comes up on the west side of 95. I think there was some years ago down there off of 86, down in, uh, the end of 86. And, um, there's some to the west of 86. And then, of course, it switches over to the east and comes up alongside of 82nd Avenue and continues...
But it's small pockets, isn't it? Do you have a map of the coca resource? Do you have a map of coca resource that would show us where deposits are?
Yeah, matter of fact, it was in a packet I received when they were talking about pension legislation.
If you were to bring that inside to be your best friend, at least for an hour. I'd like to see that if you could supply that.
Yeah, I'll send it. Matter of fact, I'll give you the packet that I received from the state when, uh, they, they designated the resources.
Most, most coca pockets are small, and they are shallow. They're actually more like 10 or 12 feet.
They're striated layers.
And they strike, sometimes you have to go deeper, but there, there's...
Very little surface.
It's up and, it's very much up and down.
It's not a uniform deposit. You'll have those striations, you'll have those sand deposits between it, and that's what makes it excavatable. You don't have to blast coca. They make equipment today that can dig it.
Dig it.
Well, if you could get a copy of that to staff and they could get it to us, I sure would appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem. I'll send it.
Any, any other questions? If not, we've got some people here, we may have some questions themselves, okay?
I'm leaving now.
This is a public workshop. It's kind of a public discussion, so if anybody in the public has comments or questions or thoughts about the process, we'd love to hear them. And I'm, I'll open it up to, you all just come on up. If you would, give us your name so that we can, uh...
Thank you, sir. I'd like to compliment, uh, Mr. Kramer on his trade knowledge.
Could, could you just give us a name so...
I'm sorry, I apologize.
This isn't official, so I mean, we just, a nickname works, too. Whatever you'd like to be called or talked toward.
Well, my wife calls me Charlie Brown, but, uh, my name is Steve Chavis.
Okay, Chuck.
Vice President with ROD Logistics, and we're the operator of the Hammond Mine on 82nd Street, or Avenue, excuse me. And a couple of comments, just comments with regard to, uh, Mr. Kramer's, uh, presentation. Means and methods are sometimes, uh, sometimes varied, uh, and, uh, of course, we could debate, you know, how we actually do the mining and so forth, which is not necessarily, uh, uh, the right time to do that. However, the one issue that, uh, that we have, we're faced with out there is the stockpile issue. Our area of operation covers a total of 72 acres. We're limited right now to 36, which is half of that area. So it creates a situation that we're, we're now, um, um, mining several products. Number one would be, uh, we're screening the, the top element to get riprap and crushable rock for 57 or, or various sizes like that, and also the sand product. And then we have a, a coca deposit, which we are processing and, and having DOT look at it as far as certifying it, obviously for local use and so forth. But it's not a large deposit, but we, you know, it's a, it's a small area, but we do have that, that product there. But the stockpile issue is we're, we're so limited in space not to, not to get outside of our limits that we have to create stockpiles in there because of the, of varying products that we have. I'd like for you guys to take that into consideration.
The reason, the stockpile, just as an aside on that, because we, Chuck, we had a discussion about this when they did the Fisher Mine on 86th. What we were looking at was next to residential areas or potential residential areas, and the idea was that there would be some berming, and the stockpiles, I think, are limited to 25 feet. And the thought being is it's really not supposed to be any higher than what would be a single-family housing.
I see.
So that people were, visually, it wasn't huge, you know, it's more cosmetic. That, that was the thought process, so I, you know, I don't know that that's necessarily, it doesn't apply to you all out there yet, that it's because of the area you're in.
Yes, sir.
I suspect in the new regulations and the rulings, it may come up, though.
Is that stock, is that stockpiling measured from the grade level or from what your mining level?
From the grade level.
From the grade level.
Yeah, because we're affecting 36 acres and we're, we're, we're taking part of that 36 acres to get it up out of the, out of the, uh, the mining area to be able to process it and get it certified and so forth.
I noticed, at the mining base level, you're also stockpiling.
Yes, sir.
So, but that's a different regulation.
Yes, sir. So those, uh, each, each mine, I guess, is a little bit different, and, uh, and the means and methods have to be, you know, uh, worked out with the, with the conditions that we have or have to work with. Uh, one, one other concern as far as the, uh, the existing road conditions, a lot of the roads are, are, may, I won't call them substandard, but they've, they've been around a good while and, uh, and probably not up to today's standards as far as load capacities. Uh, and I think, uh, my limited knowledge on design, uh, roads are designed based on weight and, and, uh, the, the weight that it would carry and so forth. But, uh, uh, an overlay, uh, is obviously a wearing surface, and it doesn't affect the, the actual foundation of the road. So, uh, you're looking at a temporary cure there, in my opinion, of course, humble opinion. And, uh, on 82nd Avenue, obviously, we're, we're familiar with that, uh, that situation. And, uh, the road, the road grading there is basically a, a slope road back from the west to the east, as, as, uh, Mr. Davis had, uh, had outlined, and we're familiar with that, so, uh, and, and our commitment out there is, is out at, uh, the Hammond Mine is we have to have a water truck and a motor grader full-time, and they have to operate and run. And we have, uh, we have a different type of water truck, I guess, than maybe some, some folks have. We have the spray bars that we can, uh, we can, uh, sort of monitor how much water we put on it so we don't overdo it and, or underdo it and so forth. So it's, there's, there's means and methods to, to obtain the same result, and, and obviously, uh, you know, all the, all the points that were made were, were, uh, valid in, in my opinion as far as the, the, uh, maintenance of the road.
How do you feel? You all have, your mine, um, I think, is dealing more with independent truckers? Does, or do you all have your own trucks? I mean, I, I can't remember in Tommy's if you all were selling, spot selling. I know Steve, if he was here, they're, they're doing more spot selling, but...
Uh, we have, uh, we have some trucks, but we do not operate them out of the Hammond Mine, and, uh, we have all independent-owned truckers.
So the reason I, the reason I bring that up is that one of the, and Chuck talks about common sense, but one of the complaints we have is trucks, whether it's speeding or, or however, and I think Stan alluded to it, in our packet, one of the suggestions is it's kind of like a demerit system. I mean, if your drivers, whether they're your trucks or independent haulers come up with and have so many problems or X problems, it will affect you as an operator because it's felt like you're not managing your own business well enough. And I'd, I, I, is that something that you, you know, have, would have a problem with or...
Uh, we don't, we do not have a problem enforcing within our limits as far as what we can do as far as, uh, making our drivers or our, our folks comply with the rules. If they cannot comply, they can't work.
Okay.
And, and, and that's been our policy and will be our policy from now on. If they If they can't comply, it's very difficult for me right now in today's economic condition to say, one strike and you're out.
Right, no, I understand that. And we're not, I don't know that we're to that stage. I think this is something we're kicking around, but I mean, this, that's what workshops are for, you know? You throw things up on the wall, we see what sticks or it falls off.
Yes, sir. But, but yes, we believe in enforcing it and we will ban somebody that willingly and blatantly violates those rules.
Do you think, is there a way, and Chuck had alluded to this briefly, but I mean, is there a way that this maintenance of the road, whether it's moisture conditions, is there ways to maybe formalize what maintenance means? Or do you think we ought to leave it the way we are? Are you willing, are you more comfortable if we leave it broad-based than somebody? You know, broad-based means that I don't think your maintenance is good versus you say my maintenance is fine and you lose.
As I sit here today, I would like to see it left broad-based to where you can apply those rules as the situation exists.
All right.
Yes, sir.
You understand staff will apply them broadly too, that's the point.
Yes, sir. And there's, you have to be reasonable in everything that you do and reasonable judgment and so forth.
There you go, being realistic again, Steve.
Okay, yes.
You mentioned about your stockpiling. What sort of changes, additions or deletions would you be interested in on the stockpiling? You mentioned you're worried about the height, or?
No, I'm worried about you or making a rule that you cannot stockpile.
Oh, oh.
That's what I was concerned about.
So if we make the height fifteen feet, it's okay?
Well, we just have to, we just have to ask you to impact more areas, so.
Most of what we did was visual pollution-type.
Yes, sir.
Right.
Chuck just fell out of his seat, I think.
I'm sure he did.
Okay.
I have a question, Mr. Hammond. When you, the road part that you are maintaining, is that the part north of your project? All your trucks come in from the north and they go out the north, is that correct?
That is correct.
And you are only maintaining from your haul route north?
We're maintaining on the eighty-second from the entry route to the Hammond Sand Mine, to the north to sixty-ninth Street.
Okay.
That's his haul route.
That's our haul route. And we're maintaining the haul. I think we have about a half mile going back in on the Hammond property to maintain also for.
Okay. Staff, have we had a lot of complaints on the northern part?
Actually, we've gotten complaints for all of eighty-second Avenue, not just the northern part.
Okay, the reason I asked the question is because you had specified that you use a certain type of watering device, the bar with the controlled flow of water on the sand on the road. And I was wondering if that is supposed to have some better, create better conditions and some other type of process, but since we still are getting complaints in the north part of the road, it doesn't sound to me like it is.
To my knowledge, to my knowledge, you have not received any recent complaints after we've started doing this.
Right, I don't, I think what he indicated is the term recent. This was more recent than.
That's correct.
They probably, may not have maintained this at the level they are.
Okay, so the technique you're using now is getting a better result than what we had in the past?
We feel it does, yes.
No, I think y'all are real new operators of the Hammond.
Right.
They haven't, they haven't been operating, you know, six months, eight months ago. These are new operators of the Hammond.
We've only been in there, what, six months, maybe less.
Okay, so what are they doing differently that's working now that wasn't done before?
The work.
I'd like to be a little more specific.
Let me just tell you, the problem that we had early on was that both of the mines there were also running trucks south, which was not on their haul route. And that's where, that's where we got most of the complaints. I think when we initiated action to pull the compliance bond on both of those mines, it got the intent, it got the attention of the operators. And I think we've had far fewer complaints in the last, since January when we took the action.
And just.
Go ahead, Mr. Hammond.
And to reiterate, Mr. Hammond is the operator and the owner of the property, and we're the operator, we're running the mine and so forth. But we spoke with Mr. Davis yesterday, and we're trying to set up a better line of communications directly to us so that we can quell or take care of any situation that may occur. Hopefully, they won't, but we would have better communication with Public Works to make sure that we get any issue that comes up taken care of quickly, so that the complaints will be minimal. And if they, if they see anything as far as code enforcement, as far as anything out of compliance, that we have a quick, a quick line of communication, get it resolved before the public, it impacts the public.
Okay, I would like, I would like to learn from the process you have gone through in the last six months. The regulate, we're going to be looking at making regulations or making changes to our regulations. Since you're pretty familiar with most recent problems here and you're addressing those most recent problems, can you tell me, do you think our land development regulations were in place and adequate to solve the problems that they should never have happened? Or do you think there are some other regulations we need to add to ensure that those problems don't happen? And I know you're in the business, and I know you don't want any more regulations, but I'd like an honest opinion of what you think should have happened.
That's a loaded question for me, but I'll answer it as candidly as I can. I think your present regulations would cover it as long as you use the common sense practices as Mr. Kramer has outlined there. A lot of things that would, that an operator would do of a pit would be over and above regulation, but it would, it would still enhance his production and his relationship with that permit and with the county. Obviously, everything, everything can be improved, even our means and methods can be improved, the regulations can be improved to create a situation where it's real clear. And then a debate later or an argument or a situation would not, would be clearly defined. My concern is that, obviously, from the operatives of a pit is that you over-regulate it and you create a situation where the product becomes so costly that you can't market it. And that's, that's one issue that we have to look at also. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Anything else?
That's all I had. Thank you.
Steve?
Thanks, Mr. Hammond. Steve Smith, Island Ranch Road Lake Sand Mine, which is the other one on eighty-second, just wanted to give a quick point of clarification as to the condition of that road out there. Predates Mr. Travis, but what we did about a year ago, after a series of meetings with Terry Cook and your Road and Bridge Department and Joe Baird, you all did receive a lot of complaints when it would rain, it would turn into a soup bowl, as you're saying, Mr. Hammond. So what we did just over a year ago is we put about six inches of road-based type material. Because that road, as you know, as you alluded to earlier, Mr. Hammond, it was just an old, they just scraped off the grass. There was no base, there was nothing. So once the dump trucks started running across, it became washboard, et cetera. So what we did is we went, us and Mr. Hammond, we put the money in and we put six inches, well, six inches down to four, so it would maintain the slope. And if you go out there on eighty-second now, it's like driving on a highway. If you go on the south end of my mine, it's still a washboard where we don't go, we don't maintain. So you can see night and day the difference in the road that we have in versus what's just the way it used to be.
Okay.
What part, I'm sorry, what part don't you maintain?
From my entrance to the south.
Okay, so you're going north too?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
What part does the drainage district play in the authority over that, over that road, the section of the road that you use?
Yes, sir, yeah. And Bob Ulovich, basically, it's the same rules. I mean, he says y'all got to maintain the road, keep it in decent conditions. Number one, because of all this groves around there, they can't have a soup bowl that they're trying to transport grapefruit up and down or what have you. So it's the same situation. But the county was more vocal about it than Sebastian Drainage. Yeah. And there was one other thing. On the permit, for example, on our permit, they do have language in there that says we have to grade and or water the road as necessary and on a regular basis. So y'all do have things on a permit-specific basis that your staff puts in to control these type of things.
Maybe some of those words should be more defined.
Well, again, if you get it too defined, they're only going to do maybe that part. But as Mr. Kramer was saying, if you let the road go down, truck drivers complain before the neighbors do. I can tell you that, because if they're having to slow down to five miles an hour because you've got three-foot potholes, they can't deliver the material, it beats up their trucks, they'll go to a different operation. So you're losing business if you don't maintain the road.
Okay. Thanks, Steve. Sorry, Steve?
Yes, sir.
When you added that road-based material, did you compact it as well, rolled it?
Yes, sir. Yep.
Would rolling and compacting these dirt roads significantly help the situation?
Yes, sir. I mean, and if you drive out on eighty-second, anybody that lives out there will tell you that that road's the best it's ever been in history.
With the compacting as well?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we spent a chunk of money doing it, but, you know, again, now we don't have problems for the trucks and we don't have problems with the neighbors.
Well, it's your advantage, sure.
Other than the dump truck traffic, but the road condition is better than that road's ever been in its history.
Well, I was just, I was just going to comment that before we went out there or visited that place, that road was, wasn't even a road.
Yes, sir.
I mean, you could hardly get down there in one lane traffic, especially after a rain. I mean, I drive down that road quite often. And, but it's improved after, I mean, just before we went out to visit it officially, the road miraculously improved.
Yeah.
And before that, I mean, you could, you'd almost need to be pulled out by a tractor. I mean, it was impossible almost. And you couldn't get two cars to pass one another. It was only one lane, yet it was quite, it's quite a wide roadway.
Yes.
And you were just, I mean, you went, it took you about, if it was a five-mile road, it took you about ten miles to get there.
I think, in all candor, I think that that road was better maintained, not better than maybe today, Steve, but it was much better maintained when all of those groves were producing fruit because they had to grade it. Somebody had to grade it. Quite frankly, most of those groves have been abandoned or in something else, and so where the damage with grove trucks would have been has gone away and it's just replaced by lack of maintenance in general. So that's something.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Steve? Yes, ma'am?
Good morning, I'm Linda Mitchell. I live on, just off of eighty-second Avenue in the Two Bridges Equestrian at eighty-three, forty, sixty-fifth Street. You've seen me up here before. And no, you have not heard a lot of complaints recently, partly because it is better than it was. And after what we had lived through a year ago, we're not quite as anxious about it. And also because we're recognizing that these workshops are occurring and that people are trying to improve the situation and find the best solution. And so we're trying to stay off your case, basically, and don't feel the need to call every day. There is still a concern on the north end of eighty-second Avenue. It is better than it was a year ago, absolutely. I would not say it's like driving on a highway, and that was what made me stand up. If anyone would like to walk out in the parking lot and see my car from trying to get here on time this morning and driving opposite direction of the water truck, you will see that I drove through some significant mud. No, I did not need to call a tractor this time to pull me out. Most of my neighbors have had that experience in the past. So it's definitely better than it was. And recognizing, you know, all of us would rather just not have the mines there. We recognize the other side, we recognize what we've heard from the other side, and we also recognize you all's position in needing to look at all of that and make these important decisions. To me, there's two key words that keep coming up and what I hear. One is prevention, the other is enforcement. And what I see that happened in the past is that perhaps it was not looked at as closely as it should have been before the bridge on sixty-ninth Street broke down and before people had to be pulled out and before accidents happened. It had to be looked at after the fact because no one had realized it needed to be considered. And that's what I'm hoping, and we're all hoping is happening here, is before anything new is added to the current situation, that the prevention is looked at. The other key word I keep hearing is the economic situation. There might be some people in here who might shoot me for this, but I'd rather pay more taxes and know that the regulations are being enforced. Because what we keep hearing is, there's not enough time, there's not enough money. And the biggest problem now is not just the mud, as long as we don't have a hurricane, we're all worried what the road will be like then, but the traffic and the drivers not following the regulations. And apparently, from what I'm hearing, no one is able to be out there and really know that. And so there's isolated instances of absolute rudeness, absolute lack of caring about safety. And somehow, that's got to be looked at, because if there's going to be that many outside truckers, I mean, I'm hearing Mr. Fisher say, or not Mr. Fisher, sorry, Mr. Kramer, is it? That he has his own trucks and he regulates that. But when we've got the small mines and another one possibly being proposed that are going to have a lot of different companies with drivers who may have a three-day job, and they don't care. That's the scary part.
Well, I think that's part of what we're trying to get done today is deal with what we consider the nuisances and the problems. So we get all of that on the table. We dealt with water before. We do have compatibility coming, which is, kind of balls up together, but enforcement is an issue. It's going to be a work job unto itself for the very reasons you're talking about. Because in the end, whatever regulations we have, that's kind of the culmination of this, is how we're going to make it work. And so we're trying to make sure we've got all the concerns dealt with in some form or fashion, and then we've got to figure out how to make it work.
Okay, so I don't need to call Mr. Davis every day, right? I've made my point?
Well, I would hope.
Don't stop. Don't stop calling. There's a problem, don't stop.
I think that, I think that this part of this road work is something that, and that's part of what we're talking about on maintenance, is trying to hit some criteria that work. Steve, they put in shell rock. Did the shell go all the way to sixty-nine? It did? Okay. I mean, I'm not sure if they've got actually a shell base, and it should have improved considerably and.
It's definitely improved, but after a rain or right after the water truck, there's still places that are pretty deep and pretty wet.
Grading needs to occur, maybe.
And the truck happened to be coming this way while I was going the other way.
One of the dilemmas out there, and Steve and Steve both hear it, is that, you know, you've got joint responsibility, and sometimes that leads to doubly good job, and it also leads to finger pointing like this as to who was supposed to do it. But if I were you, I would address the Steve on your right when you go out and just say, could you make sure this is done?
Okay.
I think one of her great points, Linda's great points, is that in that initial meeting that occurs between the county and the miner, that those conditions of the road are understood and set and that the improvements that Steve made are made at that time so that you don't get to that point.
Ahead of time, right.
Ahead of time, so that you don't get to that point where there's a quagmire.
Right. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Yeah, Frank Weigle, eighty-sixth, one hundred forty-second Street, Ursul Dune Heights, unincorporated, Indian River County.
Well, welcome to, welcome to our meeting.
It's a pleasure, it's a pleasure. One of the items, I don't know if it really was covered with the tracking pads. I know we, Mr. Kramer had said that he provides a tracking pad at the roadway. I think tracking pads should be required just prior to getting on the roadways in the mine areas by utilizing, you know, coarse aggregates such as number one or the number two stone or a paved area.
Are you referring to at an intersection, a distance prior to the intersection and a distance perpendicular to?
Prior to, prior to the trucks going on the public roads, just prior to that, in the mining area.
Oh, in, on the mining haul route? Yes, sir, okay.
Right, okay. That's where you've got to, you know, basically stop the tracking, okay? And it's easier for the operator to clean off that area. Now, one of the problems I have is you're talking about the maintenance of the roads. And yes, you know, where you have one mine, that mine operator, from what I can understand, will take care of that road, maintain it. What happens when you have two or three mines? How does that get piveted up?
We're working on that.
Okay, one of the suggestions I have, in lieu of smaller mines, or possibly even larger mines, in lieu of them maintaining the roads, let the county maintain the road and charge a toll to the operators. And that could be based on axle loadings and more important tire pressures, which nobody ever talks about, and the distance that they. more important, tire pressures, which nobody ever talks about, and the distance that they've got to go. And then this would be equitable towards all of them, if, you know, some of them just have a small distance to go versus a large distance, that could be figured in on the thing. You know, the original concept that you had for average daily trips, right, that might not be valid, because one mine might not do anything for years, and the other one would be operating at full kilt, and at that point, the one that's operating at full kilt should be the person or the entity that maintains those roads. Thank you.
Thank you. Stan, did we, we had talked about, at one point, the county doing just that as, as an alternative way back when, and I don't know, was it-
Right, we, we'd mentioned that-
She said manpower, or what was the-
Let Public Works comment on that, but you're right, there are two options. One is to, if you, if you have a shared haul route, which is the situation, and there is a fairness issue, and either by, by, when we referenced in the item, an agreement, it could be a multi-party agreement, and in that agreement, it could be that the county, if the county wants to get into more maintenance, and that's an efficient way of doing it, that's, that's one possibility. I'll let Public Works speak as to whether that's efficient or not.
Well, isn't it, isn't it possible too that you could hire somebody, I mean, contract out?
Contract out.
And so it wouldn't necessarily have to be-
Jim Davis, Public Works Director. In any one particular year, we probably have four or five mines operating, and if the burden were placed on the County Road and Bridge Division to maintain a particular haul route, you know, that could occur four or five locations throughout the county, and our resources are such that we simply do not have that luxury to be able to allocate equipment, personnel, traffic control, whatever we need throughout the county when a mining operation is in full production, and then yank all that off when that mine is not in full production. So logistically, and also budget-wise, we simply do not have the resources to, to do that for that-
Wouldn't, I mean, wouldn't one solution be the possibility of this three-way agreement, and that the fallback, though, would be as if, if either of the, if the operators don't operate properly or whatnot, it may fall in your lap anyway. I mean, you may have to do it and then charge a fee.
Yeah, and that's what the bond is there for. If, if the road is not maintained properly, there is a bond that we pull, and we can take that money, buy material, we can put our equipment and operate-
Or a third-party equipment out to do it, yeah.
Pardon me?
Or a third-party even to go do it.
Or a third-party, or a third-party.
Jim, do you have GPS tracking capability for your vehicles, county vehicles?
No. No. The county has some of the fleet on, with some GPS units, but my road and bridge fleet does not.
As far as cost is concerned, if you were, Chuck's probably going to jump out of the chair, but if it was a requirement that the trucks had GPS capability, it's really an easy way, once you get your base equipment, to completely track what's going on, where, when, et cetera, as you know.
Well, that, you're talking about the contractor trucks?
Yeah.
But, but like, like was mentioned earlier, one particular mine may have independent haulers, and you may have four or five trucking companies picking up and, and taking material from one particular mine in, in a particular day, and you'd have to have that countywide on all the, the trucks operating in the county.
So that, that's what I meant, that all independents and everybody have GPS, and then you can, well, you can follow it super easy.
I think it's going to be a given that some form of random, or some kind of form of observation is going to be-
You're scaring me.
Yeah, that's going to happen, so. Anybody got any other questions, Jim? Okay, Bee?
Thank you.
Bee Gardner?
Bee Gardner. I think what's happening here is very good, good for the process and good for, good government, and I, I believe that, to tell you a little story about once or twice, twice that I know of in the last year and a half, right on US-1, where it becomes US-1 east and west at the turn by the Miracle Mile, the road was blocked because a grapefruit truck, all the crates slid off-
Now, let's not get personal.
There was, there was grapefruit all over the road. Well, what I'm trying to say is, it doesn't matter-
We're talking about the bloody sand mine.
Okay, George, it doesn't matter what industry you're in, stuff happens, you know, and, and I think this is no different, this particular industry. The only thing that comes to my mind as far as the industry goes is it's not a new industry, but it becomes very of late, a very active industry in Indian River County, therefore it becomes-
To the, it's moved up and-
Subject to criticism. I think that we're finding that out, even with the ability to understand that the state would like to get their hands on this industry. So it, it's something that really needs to be done, is what you guys are doing right now, and you will be doing for the next year, which is to look into this and try to, try to give us some clarity of regulations, and I suppose at that point in time, I would have to say that I think the most interesting thing that I've heard today is Chuck Kramer speaking, because I've never had the ability to understand what best practices could be done in this industry, and I believe that the Fisher people probably have given us a model for that particular thing. And, and that brings me to what George Hammond said earlier. I do have nice things to say about you, George.
Right.
I think that we need a best practices management booklet, just like you said, and if, if Fisher and Kramer could get together with maybe a few other people in the industry and, and put such a booklet together, which would be a guide for what you could then glean from that booklet and see where the regulations need to be adhered to, or enhanced, or even taken away, I think, I think from that point of view, we would really have a document that we could work with. So I would recommend that we do a BMP through the industry, and then I would recommend that we take that BMP and work hand in hand with, with you folks, so that you can glean from that booklet and, and come up with some regulations. And I believe that that's the point where we really need to start, and I would hate to see, I would hate to see us get off track and, and stop these good people from an industry. The only thing I don't really understand, and I, I think it might be a question that you might want to ask of yourselves, is what is the minimum acreage needed to do this properly? I don't know that answer. And if there's a maximum acreage that's being permitted for mining, at what stages and how much mining can be done on the acreage all at one time? Those are the only two things that I see. Thank you.
Chuck, what would you say is minimum? Could you do a mine on ten acres? Or do you need twenty?
Uh, ten acres anymore, I think is kind of tough, because first off, the upfront cost, the engineering, and-
I mean, it's really, probably twenty acres would be-
I'd say that would be, I would say that would be minimum.
Yeah, I mean-
You know, up from there.
But could you do ten acres at a time?
It's going to depend on the reserves.
And depend on the product.
Yeah.
If you've seen our, most of our mines, whatever the acreage is, they've been phasing them in at like twenty-acre, ten or twenty-acre pods, but I think that-
If you phase it in at ten acres, you'd have less of an impact environmentally. I mean, you still can mine it, continuing down the line.
I think that what we do now, basically, is mine, we have a much larger parcel, parcel in mine in twenty-acre under increments, but if I was going to look at a twenty-acre piece of property, which I could only get probably less than a ten-acre lake out of, I'd have to look at that because the upfront cost, you know-
Yeah. That's what I meant, is that if you're looking at, thinking about property in general-
General, right.
You know, if, whether a mine is allowed, if you want to say that, on forty acres or ten acres, I mean, there's got to be kind of a reasonable, a point where it gets too small.
Also, a valid point is what the material is, a good point, if, you know, depending on the material and what its value is, you know, there's different types of material, drain field sand, or, or cokinger, whatever, you know, we'd look at it different, but there, there, I'd say twenty being the smallest enough.
What you would be your guess now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Really?
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name's Mary McGuire Smith, and I live at 6625 West 82nd Avenue in the Two Bridges subdivision. I have been involved with this from the very beginning, with the complaints, with the issues that have gone on as the truck haul route has been to the north. My, I want to state for the record, I'm not against mining, never have been, and I never will be. I am for mining regulation, and I applaud you guys because you have taken this into account, you have started to address our issues out there. I would, I'd love to go back through point by point that PowerPoint, because the points that have been made on the PowerPoint have sounded really good, and the Fisher operation seems to be the model for the county. That's not being adhered to by the other miners, as you know, and that's our problem. Is it better? Absolutely. Is it as good as it could be? No. Are there things that can be improved? Yes, and I think that there are things that will be improved, but the problem with the mines is the accumulation. First of all, when they first did their permitting, the traffic impact study said fifteen in, fifteen out per hour at peak hours. They've never done that. That's never, that's never even been a min, a, a, a minimum for them. I actually did my own traffic study, or traffic impact, by sitting at the, the entrance of, of Two Bridges and counting, physically counting trucks over the course of two days, and for four hours apiece. And it was averaged sixty-two trucks in, sixty-three trucks out per hour. That was from ten o'clock in the morning until two o'clock in the afternoon. It's not in the beginning of the morning when there's that glut of trucks, it's not when it typically falls off a little bit after five o'clock, or, yeah, after five o'clock, not four fifteen. They run from seven o'clock in the morning, and that's actually when they run loaded, is from seven o'clock in the morning until five o'clock at night, or maybe a little bit after, when they can kind of fudge it a little bit, okay? The second issue is that when there is enforcement around, like my husband-
Right.
Or code enforcement, the truckers are, they wearing their halos, they can't do anything wrong, and they don't. They go thirty miles an hour past my house, they smile and they wave, they go forty-five miles an hour, and they stay off of the, the shoulder of the road on 69th Street, but, and they have, they have walkie-talkies or cell phones, or whatever they use to communicate amongst themselves, and as soon as code enforcement or law enforcement leaves, the, the speed limits go up to anywhere between forty-five and fifty. I have, you know, I have raided them by following them, and, you know, forty-five, fifty miles an hour on my road, and fifty, fifty miles an hour, they don't usually go too much faster on, on-
Sixty-nine?
Sixty-ninth, yeah. They, you know, forty-five, fifty, you know, sometimes they fudge it to fifty, but, you know, usually forty-five on, on sixty-ninth. What they have started to do lately, because of the deterioration of the road on 69th Street, when they go loaded to the east on 69th Street, it's become wavy, because the base is not adequate, the shoulders are not adequate, it's not wide enough, they don't, you know, they, they, they create a traffic hazard, they have actually been driving on the wrong side of the road. They, one did that in front of me this morning while I was coming here, because loaded, they're much, much heavier, of course, than they are unloaded, and so they've got that wave in the road going east, they don't have the wave in the road going west, or on the west side of the road, so they actually travel east in the west, or, I'm sorry, they travel east in the westbound lane. They've been doing that because of the deterioration of the road. That creates a, an unbelievable traffic hazard, because they're going head-on to people that are going west. We have, we still continue to have many problems, and a lot of it is because of the maintenance of the roads in the county. Now, I'm not saying that the miners are totally responsible for the maintenance of the roads, but this truck route is, is an exclusive truck route of six miles before they get to a main artery. I don't know about all of Fisher's mines, but, but the ones that I do know of in the North County go from their gate, from their, you know, from their point of access, onto a major road that does have a good road base, that is ma, that is made for truck, uh, truck traffic, as well as, uh, uh, car traffic. Sixty-ninth Street, and up until this point, 82nd Avenue, are primarily regis, residential roads.
No, 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 no. No, no, those were put in for citrus trucks.
Okay, but citrus trucks are very occasional, they are not-
They are now.
Yes, they are very occasional compared to, compared to sixty-three trucks in, a hundred and twenty-five trucks per hour, ten hours a day, six days a week when they can get away with it, five days a week when they can't, okay? That is not growth traffic.
It's, what I'm, the only point I was trying to make is that, and people sometimes get issues wrong, is that we had that many trucks out there in, in the eighties and early nineties on 82nd Avenue in citrus trucks. They were running a huge amount of trucks out there. Unfortunately, they've quit now because the citrus has deteriorated, so you don't see them anymore, and I think that's part of the problem on 82nd Avenue, is the road maintenance, nobody's maintaining it, because some of the grove owners used to help maintain those roads as well.
I'm talking primarily of 69th Street, which is paved road.
It is now. It's, it had, it-
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Is now, but it, the, the citrus traffic is a moot point, okay? What we have now is mining traffic, okay? So I don't think that I'm off-base here. I certainly don't think that I'm off-base. I think that I am right on point, okay? And we have to live there. I live this every day. Sixty-five percent of my business, my small business that was, that was legal in this county, that was licensed by this county, that is no impact on my neighbors, sixty-five percent of it is gone, because I can't do business in my house, in my yard, anymore because of the, the mining operations, because of the truck traffic, because of the mining operations, okay? My students, I have a horseback riding business, my students can't hear me. It creates a safety issue, and so sixty-five percent of my business is gone.
Would you feel better about the, let's say, on 82nd is due to be paved, one of the issues has been is, would this problem go away if 82nd was paved from, from US, from Highway sixty to five-ten, the way it's supposed to be?
If they would adhere to two-hundred and whatever, the, the traffic study or the, the formula that you came up with, which I believe is actually, it's a faulty formula.
Well, it looks, the formula looked like to me is how much it was necessary to move all the dirt out in the time the mine was to exist, I mean, the way it looked to me, I'm not sure that that's a-
Okay, but that, the indication that it gives, the perception is that that is being used for a formula to have, you know, have so many trucks a day going in and out, okay? And we're talking about, we're talking about human impact here, we're talking about neighbor impact here, okay? We're talking about my ability to use my property rights, so we're talking about property rights here, we're all talking about the same thing, it's just from different perceptions. I was there first. My neighbors were there first, okay? And I'm not against mining, but there has to be regulation. There, again, fifteen trucks in, fifteen trucks out during peak hours of the day wouldn't have bothered me, okay?
You think we need to change the formula?
Is that, was that correct? I mean, I don't-
I think that it needs to be looked at, absolutely, okay? I think that there needs to be, and, and this is a, this is the, this is the purpose of the workshops, I believe.
Right, it is, it is. That's, that's why we just want to, you, you've said, you've said fifteen trucks in, fifteen trucks out, we, I want to, I just want to-
That was the basis on which they were planning-
That's what I want to confirm.
Okay.
But that wasn't, Chris needs to end this, but that was not a requirement or a limitation.
That was an estimate?
Yeah.
Because there were no requirements or limitations, okay? There, there's nothing, there's no regulation, that's my problem. There's no regulation, and you- There's no regulation, and you say that we want it to be broad-based so that we can do, we can regulate it on an individual basis, okay?
One of the things we are considering is the potential, not only, we've discussed the hours, we have to look at hours, we are considering trucking limitations on a daily basis. That's one of the items that we agreed to look at, so...
But we don't have a formula.
That's something we did look at.
We don't have a formula for numbers, is what you're saying.
I think one of the issues that we brought up is, do we need to look at a threshold where the volume of traffic warrants a road being paved? And if it doesn't...
Or the base being improved.
If it doesn't warrant that, we've also talked about the maintenance of unpaved roads. But right now, we don't have in our rules any limitations on the number of trucks.
On limitations on trucks regardless.
And that's what I...that's one of the things that I'd like to see implemented, is, you know, a limitation. Another thing that hasn't been brought up that I would like to make a point of is that I believe that there should be a limit on the number of mines per square miles or whatever, because it's an accumulation of traffic. It's not just one sand mine. We had one sand mine, and then fifteen days later, we had another sand mine. And both of those sand mines were permitted again under that fifteen in, fifteen out. Well, all of a sudden, that becomes thirty in, thirty out, which is a problem in itself, but they don't adhere to that.
You understood what he said, though, there was no permitted number. So the fifteen in, fifteen out was a...
I think she wants it.
That was an estimate, no.
But what she wants is...
Right. But it was some basis, it was a basis, okay? And you have to have some basis for considerations, whatever it is, that's what it was, okay? Was that basis of consideration, okay? So there, you know, it's not, was it just an arbitrary number to get permitted? Okay, if they'd have said a hundred and fifty in, a hundred and fifty out, would you have said, had that same basis of consideration?
I don't remember ever hearing when the permits came up. That's why I was asking now.
It was...it was our best estimate at how many trucks each mine would produce.
Ah, okay.
And it went into the...we use that number, that estimated number, to calculate their impacts on different links and intersections. That doesn't mean that that's a threshold, it doesn't mean that if they have one more truck than that, that anything is going to break capacity, it was just an estimate.
Well, it looked like your formula just...
We're not talking about one more truck. We're talking about four times the amount of trucks.
I understand, it looked like, though, Chris, your formula, the way I watched, looking at the numbers, it said, first you calculated the haul days in a year, then you calculated the square, or the cubic feet of material over the ten-year, or whatever the limit of the mine is, and then you worked backwards to what it would take, so many trucks per day to do the mine over the ten-year period.
Right, but it was a...
But it had nothing to do with sales, trips, it just had to do that in ten years, if it was that much and this many haul days, that's how many trucks per day had to come out.
Yes, it was assuming a perfectly uniform extraction of material from mine, which doesn't occur, and which is why we added a fifteen percent safety factor at the end of that calculation to allow for some flexibility.
Right, and you...
But the projection of fifteen was per mine, not total mine.
Right, but his daily projection, the sample, was thirty-three or something, so, but that was on the other mine, so...
But you understand, we use this to do a level of service calculation, where you have a road, a two-lane road that's, can have fourteen or fifteen thousand trips per day, daily trips.
Right.
And probably a peak hour, eight-hundred and thirty.
But I mean, part of this is getting to this maintenance level, so we've got to be realistic in a number, so that we have a way to do the maintenance as well.
And like she said, when there's more than one mine in the local area, it's going to be more than, it's going to be different than a linear extraction rate.
Exactly, exactly. I'm talking about a cumulative rate, too. And, you know, that's...that's...that is part of my concern. You know, I have a lot of little concerns also, and I think, again, in this workshop, and in other workshops to follow, I know that you guys are trying to get to this, but you also have to have both sides of the story, too.
Oh, you did well, Mary.
I mean, you have a very professional, prepared viewpoint of the mining industry, but we're not in the business. We live there, we're the ones that live there, they don't live there.
That's why we're listening to you now.
You don't live there, and you guys don't live there. I live this twenty-four-seven, okay? I do my business out there. Well, I did do my business out there, now I don't. I live out there every day, day in and day out. That's why I want my definition of reasonable, okay? I laughed when somebody said reasonable, okay? Because different people have different definitions of reasonable. But I believe that as a property owner, as a business owner, as a citizen, I need to be heard.
What you got, you said limitation of trucking volume.
Yes.
Correct? And then limitation of mines per square miles, or some kind of limitation of the stacking of mines.
Exactly.
What was your...did you have...did I miss one earlier? Was there something about maintenance?
Hours? Again, maintenance of the dirt road, I have to say, has been, you know, overall, pretty good. They could be a little bit better in monitoring the dust level of roads, because we're not talking about a nuisance here, we're talking about quality of life.
Well, she did on enforcement real hard, too.
It was on the trucking, okay.
Okay, but the maintenance of, you know, Sixty-Ninth Street, if it continues to have the level of trucking traffic that it has, whether it's mining, or groves, or whatever, okay? It needs...it needs to be rebuilt. There is no way that that, now, again, it's wavy, okay? It's wavy to the point that the loaded trucks are avoiding it by creating a dangerous situation, okay?
I'm gonna find a committee for you, you know that? You're good.
Okay, thank you, Craig.
Anything else, ma'am?
What were some of your minor objections?
Yeah, I mean, I...
Well, give them to us.
I'd have to go through the PowerPoint. There were, I mean, there were, and again, you know, I did have some notes, I don't want to take up everybody's precious time, I write down.
Why don't you get a copy of the presentation from the staff? And you can go through that, and then you could mark, then you could mark that up.
Okay.
She's all right. Come back to us, okay?
Yes, I would like to get a staff...
And you're on the email group, right?
Yes, I am.
I thought so. So you could email any, anything that you want, any comments that you have, and I'd be glad to email you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure.
I appreciate all of your time.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for your time.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Alvedere, I live at West Side Villas. My question is, basically, I believe Chris said that there would be sixty-six trucks an hour going by? Is that correct?
That was for the example that we did, we had up on the PowerPoint for Wild Turkey.
Okay.
Thirty-three in, thirty-three out in a few hours.
Okay, my question is, that's more than one a minute. How in the world would I get out on Eighty-Second Avenue if there were a convoy of sixty-six trucks an hour going by my side street?
I don't know. Chuck, is sixty-six trucks, is...is...is that, how fast can you mean, how fast would you consider loading on a bigger mine? Would you hit something like that kind of number or not?
Yeah, it could be done, yeah.
Dickerson said they were doing over a thousand.
You can load a truck mechanically from the ground to the truck, you can load a truck in a minute and a half, two minutes, and be done with it, so, yeah, it's not an unrealistic number. I wish I had that number right now.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I guess that, you know, that this, don't get upset, the trite answer is, during the other fifty-nine seconds between trucks, you could get out. But I don't, you know, these numbers are...
It doesn't sound reasonable to me. In addition, we have, I have ranch land across the street, which is a very senior citizen group. Those people would have an awful time getting out also. I think this workshop has to look at the number of hours.
Right.
Is extremely critical, in my opinion, and the number of trucks that would be allowed up and down Eighty-Second Avenue. Otherwise, it would be, it would be a nightmare. I could see myself sitting there for, God, half an hour.
We really don't have a preconceived notion on the trucking traffic, but I think that we have a very clear picture that something, numbers are going to have to be looked at right now.
That's what I think that would be of utmost importance. Thank you very much.
Wait just a second, sir. Chuck?
One of the things you have to keep in mind, you know, don't look at it on the basis of having a sole, single machine.
Yeah, you could have two motors and...
Yeah, you got two machines, sixty-six trucks is nothing. The thing is that if you want to get specific about truck volumes, then you would have to be facility-specific, because other facilities located, like our Seaman Pit at one time, or Seventy-seventh, that dump right out onto a major highway, they don't need those restrictions.
Right, that's why I said I'm not, we have, I think we hear the, we hear the problem, we're trying to solve it.
Yeah, and I understand.
One of the, one of the, one of the big problems we have, I'll just, in all candor, on Eighty-Second Avenue, is that, for better or for worse, Eighty-Second Avenue is a major collector road on the county system, which means it's going to be, as we go through time, you know, potentially it'll be four-lane at some point. That may be in my next lifetime, but I mean, the reality is, it's like Sixty-S sixth or seventy-four, fifty-eight, those are major roads. So, right now, it's dirt, and it's, you know, it's leftover and whatnot, but it's considered a major artery, eventually. So that, you know, how we deal with that, we got to, and we don't have a solution right now, but we hear everything you're saying.
I think those are the, those are the two items that we have to look at, time and number of trucks, otherwise it would, could become a nightmare for the people that live there.
No questions.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
No, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go, yeah, well, we're, I don't know how many more we've got to say. I know Mr. Van Wormer's here, and then after him, I think we'll take a quick break. I don't, not just because we've got lunch coming up, and I don't want, you know, we don't want to cut anything off, but I need to, how many more people, or how long we got here, so I know, because if not, we, you know, some of us have been up here drinking water and coffee, and I'm not sure how long we'll last till lunch, so...
I'm buying intervention, it's going to take place here soon.
I have a question for staff. Didn't Wild Turkey offer to limit the number of trucks?
Yes, it did.
Okay, they did, they limited their trips.
Two-hundred round trips.
Right. They had a number in mind. Mr. Van Wormer?
Thank you. My name is Harry Van Wormer, and I live at seventy-three fifty-five Sixty-Ninth Street, which is approximately halfway between Eighty-Second and Sixty-S sixth Avenue. Mr. Chris here brought up a calculation, I'm going to repeat what other people have said, thirty-three trucks per hour on Turkey, then you add in the two sand mines, and that would bring us up to probably sixty-six or more, which is a truck and a quarter a minute or more. We built our property in nineteen eighty, or nineteen ninety-two is when we first invested in this property. There were no sand mines around, or nothing of that type, we investigated that thoroughly before we bought the property. It's safe to say that if we had sand mines in the district, or in the area, and the other people that were in that area would not have bought in this area. So as this previous lady has said, we were there first. And now, on Sixty-Ninth Street, the road has become deteriorated, and it's deteriorating as we speak. And as far as the truck traffic is concerned, or the speed limits on Sixty-Ninth Street, they have not been adhered to, and they were not adhered to before I came in this morning. That's primarily from the Hammond Mine trucks, and we know that because of the coloration and the name on the Huggins trucks. So the speed limit is not being adhered to, and I wonder if forty-five is slow enough, if they went thirty-five, they might go forty-five. And as far as the road condition, if Mr. Davis and Chris and whoever would look at Sixty-S sixth Avenue and Sixty-Ninth Street this morning, you can see how it's deteriorating, and it's deteriorating as we speak. And also, the trucks are not, when they turn off of Sixty-S sixth Avenue, they are no longer turning onto Sixty-Ninth, they're using the medium to cross over, and deteriorating that part of the road also. This, my address here is to address the traffic and the nuisance part. And that has happened, and if we continue down the path that we had been prior to your study, it would render Sixty-Ninth Street untenable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Van Wormer.
What was it?
Uh, oh, Harry, would you, just so I've got a clear picture, because this has come up several times, I mean, that, we've got, that road conditions are a problem on Sixty-Ninth, the maintenance of the road itself, but I mean, the truck traffic, some kind of a limitation on the trucking, the numbers of trucks, is that what you're...
I guess, would go down to, if it would go down to zero, that would be...
I'm sure that would be good, but, okay.
Further than that, I don't know what you're going to do. If, you did mention yourself, I believe, if you paved the road, Eighty-Second Avenue, and took it down south, that would probably relieve Sixty-Ninth Street. And that should be done, and part of this traffic...
Well, it's supposed to be done sometimes.
Well, and if it does, but when you directed, when the commission did direct all traffic going north, that brought it up and north on Eighty-Second Avenue, and then, of course, Sixty-Ninth Street. If you don't change that, it's going to make the situation untenable.
Okay.
Could you explain your overhead here a minute?
Pardon?
Could you explain your overhead here a minute? What street is that?
Sixty-Ninth Street, in front of seventy-three fifty-five.
Seventy-three fifty-five, and that's, okay.
And needless to say, I don't believe the golf course would have been there either if the truck condition is what it is today, or purports to be in the near future.
Thank you, sir. I think we're going to take a break, as we just saw Donna. We're going to head out, and we'll be back in here in ten minutes, and we'll see if we can wrap it up sometime before lunch period is over.
I want to say something, George, but mine's so mixed up until, it won't take me long.
That's all right, that's all right.
Yeah.
You know, you didn't say, didn't you?
You didn't say, didn't you?
I was, I was.
I mean, it came into me on email, but I don't.
I built there in ninety-eight.
I bought the property in ninety-two or three or something.
Oh, man, they're thirty-eight seconds off this week.
Well.
The guy that bought the house, he had two doors running loose there.
From Jenkins, wasn't he?
He had one.
Yeah?
Do you realize what he sold that house for?
I haven't seen him, tell me that.
He put a big addition on, he put a big master bedroom downstairs. And he re-dissided, but the same stuff, every new roof, new siding, but the same style.
So, he's got one point six?
Oh, I know, because I remember thinking you had a hard time selling it at the beginning, at least a year or two.
Sorry.
If we could reconvene, or gather, or get started.
Again, here.
Oh, shoot.
It's Rich, buddy. Mind the seat. We got everybody by who we... Rich?
Oh, Richard's still, we're waiting on Richard, okay. We're going into a sort of
convening.
He may be just talking out of lobby.
Keep it short program.
Where is Bob Bruce?
Bob, see if Richard's outside.
Please.
What I, what we'd like to do is, kind of gets started and finished with the public comment. I think we hear everything you all are saying. It's nothing like, it's new to us, because we've heard this a lot, too. And I don't mean that in a trite manner, I really don't. But I'd like to, I'd rather not replow the same ground, if possible. If you've got other comments, something new, please come up. If not, you know, we need to go ahead and wrap up, so we, because we've got some items, we've got a list of items here that we've been keeping up with, that we're gonna make, that staff recommendations and additions to the staff recommendations. So, I know there were a couple other people that wanted to speak, and all I do is ask that you not go over too much new, old stuff. If you bring up some new points, we'd appreciate it.
Don't sit down, Bob.
Who's, Bob, you wanna, and Suzanne, okay.
Hi, Bob Bruce, one-two-three-nine-six, North Ag-1-A.
New guy.
Yeah.
We won't hold that against you, Bob.
Okay. Give me a definition. What is a haul route?
You wanna, it's a defined...
We're not gonna answer.
Yeah, it is a determination made essentially by Public Works as part of the, part of the traffic impact, what the, what the primary haul route is. They have haul routes that are on-site, that changes obviously over the life of the operation. But this is, this is the primary route that the trucks will go leaving the site. I don't know that there's a, there's a specific mileage that it is, or so forth, that's looked at as part of the traffic impact, and it's gonna be different depending on the location.
They try, you try and stay on more major?
Yes, certainly, yes. A haul out must be on a collector road, it could be collector or arterial. And there is one exception in the code, and actually, it's one of the things that we suggest to be clarified with the regulations. There are times when a local road can be used as part of a, part of a haul route. I think the intent of it is, if it's serving non-residential uses, however, the way that it's worded, the way, it's been interpreted a couple of different ways over the last several years, and we think that needs to be clarified.
Okay. What is the end of the haul route?
Well, again, I'll, with my Public Works hat on very temporarily here, it's, it's not to try to determine, obviously, we can't determine where every haul truck is gonna go, every delivery site and so forth. It is the primary route that's taken initially by trucks, you know, coming to and from that particular mining operation. There's not a defined distance, and it could be that criteria should be, you know, put in the ordinance with respect to that. Again, it's something that's dealt with, with the Impact Study, and I think as y'all know, and this is reflected in the packet, one of the first steps in the Traffic Impact Study is a pre-application conference between the applicant and traffic engineering, to actually define, you know, at that point in time, where they think the major trips are gonna be, at least the initial part of the trip.
I guess I would kind of summarize this. The problem is not the mines, the problem is the truckers, and the after-effects of them going to and from the mine. The mines seem to be relatively well-regulated. The incentives to the truckers is if they do more trips per day, they get more money.
Yeah.
And that's the big problem.
Flow rate.
Huh?
Just the flow rate.
Right.
Right. And that's really pretty much all I have to say. There is another nuisance that's not really addressed here, and that is the vibration from the trucks. And I certainly felt it in my house when the Sebastian Inlet Hall project was going, going on, excuse me.
That's really... That would be, just, Bob, wouldn't that be kind of a, that'd be an offshoot of volume of trucks, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for letting us have this opportunity to speak, and thank you to the staff as well for their work. I'm not as prepared as I'd like to be. I'm looking after my elderly parents. As my mother keeps saying, paybacks are heck, so...
Could you state your name?
I'm sorry, Suzanne Fransky, and I live at eighty-one, ninety, Thirty-seventh Street, corner of Eighty-second. I would just like to go over a couple points, if I may. The first of which is, it's to me, and I live close in, near the mines, to me, it's not just the trucks, it is the mining problem as well. The dust and debris, the environmental pollution. I'm having to wash my windows every month, every month. And I'm so glad you mentioned the vibrations, because as many of you know that have come to the County Commission meetings, I had four glasses walk off the shelves in my kitchen and break. Now I've got foundation cracks. I'm not the only person with foundation cracks. Another family that's lived on the same road twenty-six years now has cracks as well. And then I thought, well, how unusual is this? And then I did a little research, looking at the mining operation in South Florida. For a ten-mile radius, they have foundation cracks in residential homes now. That's serious. And who's gonna take care of that? Who's gonna make those repairs? Who's gonna build new homes? You know, is the county responsible for that? For allowing mining to go on? You know, to me, I'm not against mining, I'm against mining in Ag. One. This is industrial mining. And I've lived here over fifty years, and have been in the citrus business myself, and I can tell you, I have never, ever had an argument or a discussion, or had to defend myself with a citrus truck. I've been run off the road, I've had my wheels hanging over the canal and had to be pulled out, twice. And, you know, it's amazing to me, when they talked about how nice the road is going northbound. Well, wouldn't it have been communal if the folks had decided to fix the southbound road? That road is horrific. The county has acknowledged that the base is ruined. I have now, I didn't even know there was a strut in a car. I have had two broken struts and a power pressure pump, totaling over five thousand dollars. But, oh, they fixed the roads on the route they're running now, while totally ignoring the damage that they've done. And who paid for the road to be repaired? You know what, all these roads, who paid for the bridge? You paid for it. The staff paid for it. We all paid for it. How is this possible? If I run into somebody's car, I'm paying for it. If I burn somebody's house down, I'm paying for it. If I'm negligent, I pay for it. Why are we in this county allowing this to happen for the enrichment of a few people, while we are all paying for their damages? I was stunned the other day when I drove Sixty-ninth. I was coming back early in the morning from being with my parents in Sebastian, and I take the road Sixty-ninth, and I think, oh, it'll be quicker, and the road should be pretty good. Well, it was just as bad trying to dodge those trucks coming on a paved road. And I keep hearing people say, well, if you pave the road, it's going to be better. Oh, yeah? Please, please take a ride out on Sixty-ninth. Every road in our county is gonna look like that, and who's going to pay for those roads? There's a lot of land in Florida that I'm sure carries the amount of rock and cokina that is necessary, and I would invite the state to look at some of those areas where residents have not been living there for thirty, forty, and fifty years, and paying local and state taxes, doing our share, living as good neighbors. There's a pool down our road, and she spent over two thousand dollars trying to get the levels right, because they say there's so much sand and dust in the air. Over two thousand dollars. What did she do wrong, except have her family and make a home there? It's very distressing. When you think about the carcinogens on all these trucks, when you, the dirt alone coming off these trucks, the noise, and they were running, when I counted, when this first started, although the guidelines that were given to us, and we assumed that they were legitimate, because it said, ranch road, land sign, sand mine, roubles. Every single rule, rule, given to the miners, was broken. And they're still not being adhered to. This has gone on for years. And the first lady who spoke and said, it's not because of lack of interest. We really believe that so many times this chamber has been filled for the commission meetings and for the planning and zoning, that you have a very good idea of how many hundreds of people are affected. Just at the south end, there are over three-hundred-and-fifty residents, just at the south end. And let me share with you also, when everything is directed to the north end, those of us that live at the south end, we felt no victory in that. Those are our neighbors. That wasn't right, that everything be pushed on them. What's right is that this is an Ag. One, residential and agriculture. Agricultural trucks, maybe some ag mining, but not industrial mining. That was never the intent, and the law looks to the intent. That's what the law looks to. The law looks to, in Tallahassee, health, safety, and welfare. We have had serious accidents, we have had invasion of our homes and property, we've had people go into the canal and flip. We have called the police, the deputies regularly, they come, and they're there for as long as they can be there. But guess what? After the first trucker sees that deputy, it's over. They radio each other. So, no more speeding. But as soon as the deputy leaves, back we are on the roadway. But, anyway, let me just check here and see. As it relates to Mary's operation, I have such angst over that. She spent over a decade building that business, and it was taken away from her by someone who feels they have more power. What is it, because they have trucks, because they have more money, because they have deep pockets? When in Indian River County did that become subsequent and a precondition to living a peaceful and existing life, which has always made our community so attractive? When that happens, we all need to leave. If you bear with me just a minute.
While you're looking, is there a way to define commercial, like a commercial sand mine versus other sand mines? Because we got, because we got, not, Mr. Van Wormer made the point, but I mean, the Quail Valley Golf Club had a huge sand mine.
Right.
That's how that lake got there. Now, the difference is, they kept most of the dirt on the land, they kept it all there. There are residential projects all around that area, and all that, where they dig a lake, and you know, they sell the houses around it. Most of the time, that dirt that they use stays on the property, but a percentage of it comes off, because they dig more, even, and that's been, that's been the rule in the past, and we've never had to deal with the, maybe just sheer commercial, except out west of town further. And this used to be west of town. But, that's, I mean, that's, you know, I don't doubt with you, I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just saying, I don't know how we, that's part of the dilemma we're faced with, if we have to define things like that.
Well, yes, and I think the reason that they were not defined clearer is that this kind of industrial mining was never anticipated in Indian River County.
Well, we just, Suzanne, I think they, it was, I don't know if it was anticipated. We did a lot of this, it's just, the growth spurt magnified the need, I guess.
Yes, because, George, I feel sure that planning and zoning, nor the County Commission, nor the staff, would have put so many hundreds of residents at risk, life and death risk driving. It's shocking what has happened. And I was thinking, just when I was coming back into Vero this morning, when I turned onto Sixty-ninth and that truck was in my lane, I thought, I'm awfully tired. For a minute, I had to think, am I in the right lane? And then I realized, I'm in the right lane, he's coming right toward me. So, it's not if it's a paved road. What we're talking about is, when you have thought by now that the mining operations would have really gotten their people in line if they were capable of doing so, I'm here to suggest to you, they cannot. It has been proven. Our deputies have said they don't have the manpower. It cannot be controlled. It is wanton, it is reckless, it is negligence, and at its highest form. And trust me, there are laws that will be put in place to protect this, and they have to be, because there are recourses that, with all of these meetings that have gone on, the liability for this is squarely on all of our shoulders. Each one of you, the County Commission, those of us who have reported it, and then have not called the state for help, although the DOT did come and weigh trucks, trying to get them to stop hurting our road out there, and they did over two thousand dollars of fines in four hours. So, that was nice for one day, but then, the state can't keep coming back. But I know what the state will listen to, and that is the people who feel that their lives are being destroyed, they have been honorable citizens, for the enrichment of a few who disobey the law, who do not care about health, safety, and welfare, and who are putting you in the position to where you have to come through meetings like this and hear over and over how disadvantaged our county and community is coming. Because guess what? We are not industrial mining. If you just jump in your car, or get up in a little airplane and fly over the center of the state out west of us, there is untold mountains of land that people would love to sell. And I'm sure that there must be some cokina, should the state want to do, and the county, some testing. And I'm saying that it's possible for everyone to live here, but not with, not without the respect, and not without the dignity provided to all of us that existed before we had to struggle with conditions like we've been struggling with for three years. And I invite any of you to my home. I would love to let you see the cracks in my foundation now, and they're, it's unbelievable, I'm sure, all the way under my house. And I wonder, who am I going to come to now to fix that? Who allowed the trucks to speed? Who allowed a truck every twenty seconds on my count, the day I stood out there with my umbrella in a chair, over one thousand trucks?
Suzanne, take a deep breath. We, we, take a deep breath.
Yeah, sorry. Well, I wanna hurry and not take too much of your time.
You hear the music in the background.
Yeah.
You hear the point.
But, anyway, yeah, thank you, George, but...
Oh, you're welcome.
Have I forgotten anything?
No, you haven't forgotten a damn thing.
I have forgotten one thing. Well, we're passionate about this, this is our life, and it's not just our life, it's that for all the hundreds of people that live on Eighty-second. But more importantly, wait till you go down and see a school bus following these... But, anyway, yeah, thank you, George.
Oh, you're welcome.
Have I forgotten anything else?
No. You haven't forgotten a damn thing.
I have forgotten one thing. Well, we're passionate about this. This is our life. And it's not just our life. It's that for all the hundreds of people that live on 82nd. But more importantly, wait till you go down and see a school bus following these trucks. It's shocking. The school bus can't see. The trucks don't care. But, anyway, the last thing, of course, is property values. Property values. All of us understand that. We all work hard for every dollar we get. And after taxes, that dollar isn't much. But we put a lot of our love and affection and hard work into our homes. And we never anticipated a decline in a property value. And I said to someone, you know, there's so many houses on sale for 69th, and this was a real estate person who said to me, well, everybody's trying to sell a house. I said, oh, no. Not if you built it with your big dream in mind. And it was done before property values went down. These signs have been up there since the mining started. And that was before, that was during the boom, not during the swag. It's just that it continues, the same issues, the same problems. A concrete paved road isn't going to help. What's going to help is moving industrial mining where it does not interfere with the quality of life, health, safety, and welfare of the residents. Thank you.
That, I think, is the summary of your point, right? That's what you would like to say? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
On the foundation, is that due to settlement or vibrations in the road? Or what, what is the evidence on that?
I don't think they know.
I don't think you've rolled the dice on that one.
Could that, I'd like to have that, you email that perhaps to staff, the source of the information about the 10-mile effect of...
Yes, that came off the, off the website out of Miami Research, but I'm sure staff has that.
Okay. I'd like to have that.
And if I may say, my house is relatively new. I think I'm six years old. And I had no cracks in my foundation. And I'm the house closest to the road. But I knew I was in trouble when dishes and glasses were walking off my kitchen shelf and smashing on the floor. And when my dog was jumping up at 6:15 in the morning letting me know the trucks were coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, I'd like to see that research information, too.
Okay. Anybody else? Surely no one has anything else to say after that.
Be quick, George.
Okay. Public meeting closed. Any, we got, the one thing that I think that most people, I don't know what, who's seen it or not, the staff has 14 recommendations that we should just summarize briefly so that, to look at. And what I think I'll do is, I'm just going to kind of touch on them one at a time. If anything, anybody has something, they have a question about it, we'll do it. I'm not going to read the whole thing. I'm just going to, first one was require a comprehensive dust control as part of the site plan of some sort. And then we've got to clarify the 20-acre phase requirement for phasing in. That's, it kind of goes to your minimum land.
You want to do one at a time, or?
Well, I mean, I was just going to, unless you've got a...
Well, I'd like to, the first one, to limit the stockpile height to 20 foot. Put that in there, or 15 feet, 20 feet, or 25?
25 now, but maybe drop to 20 feet. Are we looking, because I mean, this will come, what'll happen is, we'll come back, okay, I mean, we can, staff can look at, these are recommendations. They've got to kind of finalize this. But, I mean, make a note that, you know, possibly drop the height, the stockpile from 25 to 20 feet.
Reconsider heights.
Reconsider height or something up to that effect, yeah.
The second one is, the second, you got more on that, Jerry?
No, now the second one I'll have something.
The second one is on the phasing in. This is, we were discussing minimum land and how they deal from, move from 20 acres to 20 acres, how they transfer the mining operation.
I'd like to see that reduced also.
The 20 acres or what?
Yeah, the 20 acres at a time.
He's looking, that's where we have the 20, you do 20 acres at a time and you move from...
At a time.
First 20 to the second 20.
Right.
He was asking about maybe making it 10 and 10. I think you've got to, I think...
It'd be less of an environmental impact, I would think, by only opening 10 acres at a time.
I think part of it that, that we'll need to look at, and kind of that best management practices approach, and I think Mr. Kramer alluded to this, is how you, how, and this is part of what we're suggesting here, how you actually transition, you know? An active mine is, it's evolving, it's moving. How do you stabilize and keep part of that 20 acres, you know, under control and you're moving into the next phase? So, rather than just come up with, with an acre, I think it's good to have an acreage area, what phase we're looking at, but probably take a best management practice approach as to how much area is disturbed, how much of it is under control.
At one time.
Because that's the, that's the real...
That's the point.
And if, you know, if six of those 20 acres is, is water, you know, at a given point in time, you know, there's, there's not a dust management problem there, obviously. So, that's kind of, I think what our staff would be, would be looking for some specifics of how to transition.
You understand what he's talking about. He's saying...
Limit the amount of area that is disturbed, basically.
At one time.
Right, at any given time.
Right.
At any given time. That's what I'm looking at.
Yes.
Okay. The require submission of noise modeling and analysis demonstrating compliance with chapter 974 requirements. You might allude, what, 974? That's the noise level in the county?
That's correct. Noise, the noise ordinance, 974. And I think here is, and again, it could get down to kind of some, some best management practices in terms of identifying where the, where is the equipment going to be? How's it going to be mitigated? Is it going to be, have baffling or the type of muffler thing that we heard about? Is it going to be behind burns?
The comment, only comment I had there is that the times that we've dealt with noise in the county under 974, and I'm thinking air conditioning units primarily, there's a, there's a criteria in there that it's a 15-minute sustained level. I mean, and we're dealing with trucks or something that's a burst.
Period.
And I don't know how you, I'm not sure how you're going to get that fitted into the chapter or whatnot. But I think that it's, we need to look at it. We've got to figure it out. And I, I keep thinking that a lot of this is still going to be numbers, like it or not.
And I think when you get down to the next one, number four, we're kind of going beyond 974. We've identified specific activities that, regardless of what 974 decibel level says, we need some, some type of mitigation there. And that's, what, number four, can I guess?
Yeah, I think number three is a, an attempt to be proactive instead of reactive. Our current ordinance is reactive, a maximum decibel level. What we're looking at here is tell the, have the applicant do some modeling up front and tell them, tell us what decibel level is anticipated. Like the church that we had that, that indicated they were using lower noise type of air condition. And that's what we're looking at in three.
Yeah, that's, that's... Okay, that's good. Number four is the requiring all machinery on site to be buffled, buffered, or baffled, or dug into the ground. I think that was what Chuck had with his...
And also, my, what I add is the turbo style mufflers on that, for example, or that, i.e. turbo style mufflers.
Right. Okay. Because that's, a given is to prohibit blasting.
Yes.
Which is part of, been a comment. Number six is specify truck fill levels and methods. Alternative practices ensure trucks leave mining site with little or no loose material. In lieu of what he said, I don't know how you're going to do that. Because, and you can look into it, it needs to be looked into. I'm just, don't have any idea.
Only way you could do it is by weight. You can limit the weight per truck, and you'd have to have a set of scales there or something. But that's the only true way you can do that.
And I mean, how, I don't, I'm just listening to everything I've heard today. This is little, I have heard, I haven't heard of, I haven't heard a lot of problems with fill falling off of trucks being a problem.
Well, yeah, I've heard of that.
I mean, I heard the tracking, you know, where they're coming off the property.
Well, the sand blowing off the top and hitting windshields.
Sure. Okay, well, I mean, I missed one, Suzanne. I didn't hear that. You better write it down.
They put boards on the...
No, sit down. The public hearing is closed.
Not even a chance.
...on the blast, on the blastings.
Yeah.
Does that include water blasting, aircon blasting, as well as dynamite blasting?
This is aimed at dynamite or explosives.
It's explosives.
Benzene.
It's mainly a rock man, rock mining, which we don't do up here. It's dynamiting, not sand blasting, not, none of, you know, it's only explosives.
You might want to add the word explosive blasting in there.
Yeah.
With number six, we're kind of, we're on that. You're right. What we heard today was, if you have, if you have a tarp over it and you're adhering to speeds, you shouldn't be getting anything from the bed of the truck. But, but tracking on or making sure you don't have any loose material on the truck, getting it inspected before you actually roll out and rolling out onto a paved apron or a rock apron before you get to the haul route. Those are things that would, that we've heard today. I think that would come along.
Apron on the side of the mine.
Okay.
Correct. And rumble strips or something of that effect.
Right.
Let me ask Chris a question. It may be somewhere farther down. I don't remember. But, Chris, when a, when a truck goes overweight, is there an exponential effect on the roadway?
Yes.
Uh, yes, there is. They have a concept in pavement design called live loads. And when you get beyond the legal limit of a truck, as far as the weight, it, yeah, the effect, the impact on the road goes up.
Which is something we ought to hold under the, to the future toward on enforcement side. But, I mean, that's overweight.
Exactly.
If later down here, when we have this, if we have penalties, that's something that should fall there.
Also along those lines, Chris, the third axle, a lot of times I see the trucks fully loaded with that third axle up. Obviously, if that axle was down, it would be less of an impact on the road. Isn't that right?
That's correct.
So, that's again enforcement.
That's why they have that, that tag axle to spread the weight.
So, again, that would be enforcement, that axle should be down.
Uh, well, no, the, the truck will weigh the same whether the axle is deployed or not. But it's, it's actually better for the...
Road.
Less wear and tear on the truck and the road to have the tag axle in place.
Yeah. So, that'll be, again, under enforcement.
What was the, the final wording on number six? What was the final agreement on that? I'm...
This is, these are, there's nothing, this is not a, the rule. This is just stuff we're telling them that they have got to be looking at. My concern was that Chuck said he didn't see how we could come up with...
Right.
Levels or whatnot that made sense.
I think based on...
On trucking. And that was, but he's, he's brought, he's got some other ideas on stuff. And so, we, you know, let's see what they say.
All right. I wasn't sure what the direction this staff was.
No, no, it's a good, it's a good point you raised. If the direction is, we basically strike truck fill levels, if that's not a reasonable way to go, but methods and alternatives for ensuring that, you know, we're not going to get spillage. There are other things to do and other things to prevent tracking that were discussed.
Specify methods and alternatives, not really truck fill.
Alternatives to this. I'd like to go back. I'm sorry. I know, I know I've got you right on the edge here, George, and you're halfway out the door.
Good.
I do know that.
He'll never make public, he'll never make it for public office.
Suzanne did bring up something, and, and I don't understand the reason for her question. So, I would like to understand prohibit blasting. There was a discussion, there was something about sand blasting, water, water blasting, that type of stuff. Can you please tell me what these alternatives are to, to blasting that I am not familiar with?
Water blasting.
The, the idea in number five was to prevent explosives at that, that type of extraction technique. I'm not familiar with all the other types of...
I don't know that there's other, I don't, I don't, is those techniques in mining something we don't understand, Suzanne?
I don't know that they're used, that they're used here. Our main concern has been blasting with explosives or using certain types of active chemicals, which we already, we talked about the last workshop, to prohibit those as well for extraction.
We have no materials that are, that make blasting, explosive blasting necessary.
But we're going to put it in.
We're going to make sure.
I, I think you're correct. That's, that's our finding. But prohibit it so that it doesn't become a problem as far as use of explosives.
And the other blasting is water blasting that they use...
They can use that to clean, clean aggregate.
They don't use it here, though. It's to wash away the top.
Exactly.
Is there a problem with that water blasting? I, I don't know what the ramifications of that are.
Not from a noise or nuisance standpoint, I don't believe.
It's more environmental impact.
It's an environmental issue.
Yeah.
Environment is important.
Well, yeah, but I suppose that would be disgusting now.
I don't think, I mean, I, I don't know of any...
And we, this, as far as the environmental impact, you know, we talked about wash down water at the last, at the last workshop, to make sure there's a containment setup on site, including wash down areas. That's, that's going to be addressed.
Thank you.
Establish specific maintenance and repair standards for unpaved and paved haul routes. We've, we've talked a lot about this today. And we need, we're going to have to, within the staff, and we're going to have to have to come back with something that improves the situation.
I thought Mr. Wago brought up some good points that ought to be considered.
Right.
Yes.
Can you put together seven and eight, maybe? I mean, they're both the same damn thing.
The, the aid is require formal haul route maintenance agreements between the county and the mining operator. The only, this is split out because of what you heard me and Stan talking about, that what they need to have is some kind of written, more formal written agreements that spell out ahead of time what the mine operator is supposed to do and/or the county is supposed to do. Either it's percentage breakdown or something. We need to have something in writing because I can promise, if they've got the checklist, as Suzanne and these people had a minute ago, that those are the ones that, that clarifies any kind of general discussion. It's either, it gets done ahead of time. So, we, you want something...
Okay, okay, I believe you. I believe you.
Good. You're welcome. Paving threshold, establish a paving threshold for hauling routes. This is, we didn't talk about this really. We alluded to it. But this is trying to figure out how many trucks, if you have a certain number of trucks that above a certain number you are required to pave, rather than just maintain the road. And, you know, I have no problem with that. That's going to be a...
That's an excellent idea.
Specify the haul route criteria. This is what Bob alluded to, trying to figure out the beginning and the end. Require applicants and operators to pay for random law enforcement and monitoring on all haul routes. This is a, we've got to figure out how to do something and this was the first thought.
I think you're gonna get some attorney matters in on this because they tried to do this to the docks over in the city of Real Beach when I was, had my boat there and they wanted to charge us extra for law enforcement for patrolling around the city marina and we jumped on them with both feet and there's no way they could back that up, so I think you're gonna have some trouble with the
And rather than
Everybody pays for law enforcement.
Maybe rather than random, require applicants and operators, we need to look at how we are going to deal with, the county's gonna deal with, whether it's this method or ourselves, how we're gonna increase random law enforcement monitoring, because we've got to do something on monitoring.
We can look at, at if there are any legal impediments. You're dealing with an administrative permit, possibly it will become a special exception process and there might, there might be discretion for that, but we'll certainly look at the legal
Do it as an impact fee.
They, they froze in Real Beach when we told them we were gonna
Is there anything that, and I, I don't know if this is legal also, if somebody calls in and says truck number such and such or license plate, you get three or four complaints on that one truck, is there some way to just ban them?
Well, the next item addresses, talks about specify forfeiture of posted security for the certain number of driver violations. If you're, this puts the onus on the mine operator.
The operator instead of the driver.
If X amount of trucks have problems, then there must be a breakdown at the mine on management and they're gonna have to tighten up or help monitor this.
Okay, so that's where it would go, to the operators.
And just procedurally, just, we, we really can't base any kind of violation just on complaints so they have to be verified. I mean, I mean, and there is a difference and that's, that's the hard part in enforcement. Not, like, like we said earlier, a lot of times complaints are, obviously there's a legitimate basis for it, most times, but we, we, just, documenting the number of complaints we get is, is not the same as documenting by actual violations that, that can be documented and that's
Stan.
That's a little different.
I was talking to Bob about this before, but, and it doesn't really cost a lot, software associated with the GPS system that I was talking about. And it does so many things, it's use of technology and you, you have a plasma screen and you actually watch the truck moving and it shows you the speed that the truck is at, at that point. So when a driver knows that there's that kind of observation, maybe it's Big Brother, but still it has an effect on how that person drives that truck to begin with. And it's not a matter of somebody calling in all the time and saying truck six is going too fast. I think it's something that the county should definitely consider because it has so many uses, far beyond just the mining issues. It's something that can be done and it doesn't cost that much to do anymore and you could require the trucking firms to have that device installed in their trucks and then if it gets stolen, they can always find it.
Is your, your suggestion that the, the operators use a GPS system, not that the county
No, that the county have the software and you can go in and look at it anytime arbitrarily and they just have the responsibility of having that device on every one of their trucks so that you know truck, truck six or 10 or whatever is here and going how fast.
You know Sears
Does a lot of other things too.
Sears trucks, the, the maintenance people that they send out, there, there's a GPS on every truck. Sears knows where every one of their people are and a lot, and so I think FPNL and some of these other people
It's becoming technology.
They need to do is look at how they would
But, but I don't know if the county needs to do it, because if you put enough fine or emphasis on the operator of that mine, he will put them on that truck.
Yep.
And so I think that's the way to go.
Get some monitoring.
And what you were talking about, Donna, was get the operator to be responsible for this thing. And then, then I think a lot of these other problems are gonna, because the operator can install this kind of system to get, it'll be cost effective. If you make the fine strong enough for that operator, closing them down, he will put those, put those mechanisms on the truck.
There's only one problem with that thought process and that was what Stan said, the one word, validating each complaint. And this is one way to validate, I, I, you know, you could have 100 neighbors get together and say, let's call on such and such mining complaint. So staff has a point when they say, we have to validate each complaint. So how do we do that?
Well, the, well, the mine owner can actually show that, you know, that truck has not done that.
Okay, via the GPS, so you're, you're, okay, so you're saying that he uses GPS.
I think what, that, that either or, I think that what would be good is if the staff could just research GPS systems and then we can figure out how to use it.
It's, it's gonna be around, it's coming.
Chuck?
I suggest something?
Sure.
To the podium, at the podium.
Yeah.
Can't hear you, dude.
Actual traffic infractions. I mean, that's the only way you're really gonna be able to do it, have actual infractions, actual ticket written traffic infractions.
That's, that's another, as, as an alternative, you're right.
That's not working.
Yeah, I don't know if the county would have any other recourse. I mean, you have to, in order to pull somebody's bond or, or enforce that, that rule, you would have to have something concrete to do it. The only thing you would have would be a, an actual violation.
Yeah, but she's told, when the, when the first one gets, sees the policeman out there, then
You know, brief.
Please let me respond to that.
You, you guys have your radios Chuck for your technology, then let the county have the GPS system for their technology, check.
As far as he's talking about, and, and my husband works for the, for the sheriff's office, okay? He doesn't want to write these truckers violations because they'll lose their CDLs. He wants to be fair and he wants to be, you know, he wants to give them chances. So what he's saying is, you know,
We, we
Stroke these guys.
Right.
And, you know, law enforcement doesn't want to do that, the residents don't want to do that, but I agree with Greg Smith, the county needs to have the software to be able to monitor it, to verify complaints and things like that. So that way the truckers don't get stroked every time that, you know, they do something wrong, but it's a cumulative thing and it's fair. That's all I wanted to say.
I think what he's talking about, and, and thank you both, we appreciate it, is that, is trying to tie this into what we would consider with a penalty, a, a physical penalty, financial penalty to an operator and that's when you get, you know, written violations and specifics become a problem. But I think the main thing for us right now with the staff is like with the point of anything else, is this is something we need for them to look at. It's, it's, it's on the, this is on the radar now, okay? That's, that's the main thing.
Joey, can we go back to number 10 in a minute?
Uh, yes, sir.
Uh, specify haul route criteria, maybe this is where we should put in limit total number of runs for any one route. In other words, if you have one mine on that route or route or 10 mines, there's gonna be a, a difference in the impact. Can we limit the total number on
The total number of runs would have to be shared by any number of
Shared by how many mines are on that particular route.
Yeah.
I don't know if that would fit in there or somewhere else.
That's why, that's why Stan is here. I don't know how to do it either.
He can, we can look at, what we're, what we're trying to do now is get the points that we're gonna have, this, they're coming back to us on what we can do and not, so I mean, this is, we're, we're starting the process, so it's, it's what we're talking about is still fairly general today.
Yeah.
Right, right, and I think with, with, with item number 10 here, one of the, the criteria could involve the adequacy of the roads, which we get into
Yeah.
And that's cumulative impacts, which we talked about
It may vary from haul route to haul route.
I asked him at the break, I asked him that, because I mean, one of the things and Chuck knows is some, some mines come out on a major thoroughfare
Right.
Where, where the traffic, the amount of traffic could be higher than if it comes out on another one.
Exactly.
So it's almost, it's, it's hard to be
It's gonna be site specific on each haul route.
Right.
Site specific.
This might be unreasonable, but, and, you know, somebody wants to start a mine, it seems to me that a lot of the problem on 82nd is because we ended up with four mines at one time. Is it unreasonable to think that there would be some kind of zonation associated with when mines are in use or alternately using them? You use one on 82nd at, for six months, you know, some kind of schedule so that you don't have four or five miles in one district operating at the same time feeding the same roads?
That's the point.
The way you, the way you limit that is by having X number of trips on a road per day.
Exactly.
Those trips have to be split between each of the mines on that road.
Can you specify different, or differentiate between residential trips and, and truck trips?
Oh, no, we're just talking truck trips.
Just truck, truck, mining.
Mining truck.
Right now, if, if we have, we have our, our, our traffic study criteria, would this be different than
Yes.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
Site specific to the mines.
Okay.
Coming out of the mine.
Screaming right along the speed.
Can we do that?
Well, let, let me just, can I just ask you what you're trying to accomplish? It's, it's always good before you figure out what the rule is, what you want to accomplish. And what, what I said before, when Chris determines, when he estimates the number of trips, he's doing that to make sure that we maintain our level of service standard, our level of service on a road. So we already, like on, on, on most two lane roads, it's about 830 directional trips per peak hour. So I mean, there is a lot of capacity on a road, so it would take a lot of trips before you use up the total capacity.
That's why I asked that question.
Yeah, and that's a good question.
So
And the, the point I'm trying to make is the amount of trips that come out of the mines, truck trips from the mines in any one area would be limited, as, or using the same haul route.
But, but the question is for what reason? Is because there's not enough capacity on the road?
No, to limit the impact on the, the residents.
It's because of compatibility of the traffic with the surrounding neighborhood, I guess, but I'm not sure how you're gonna define that.
By default, the level of service would fall because of the maintenance of the road.
It seems like you could, you can evaluate that if one mine's gonna cause certain amount of traffic damage and require manage. Two are gonna do at another level, three mines are gonna do at another level,
Right.
Four mines are gonna be at another
Go set a limit somewhere.
And, and that would be, because the first mine in there, he's got his property rights. The second one has a certain amount of rights, but he ought to pay for it, the third one. So I, I think there's, I think it's pretty easy to figure this out.
Would there be some correlation between the number of residents that, that live on a route and the number of trips that are allowable to that area?
That's part of the level of service traffic.
They have to do with zoning.
See, I'm hearing, I'm hearing some different things. I'm hearing limit the number of trips because of the damage it causes on the road. I'm hearing limit the number of trips because of the capacity of the road and functioning of it.
Both.
But we really should work out and find out what it is, how much, how many trips will, will cross, cross a threshold, whichever, but I'm still not sure whether it's damage to the road or capacity.
That's why you get the big bucks, Bob.
Well, I mean, I think We can work on it.
We're worth exactly what we get paid, Bob.
It's both, it's both things, I think.
I think that, I mean, I think that, Jerry, let me see if I can, if you're Mary with your clicker, sitting on her property, is there a certain number, does she have a threshold of acceptance versus a threshold of not being accepted?
Right.
And whether it's one mine or two mines or three mines, doesn't matter. And I don't know, and, and, but I think that what, I think it's that perception of just the number of trucks that go by, which is hard to define on any given road.
But that's the point that we're trying to
That's what we're trying, that's what he's talking about, so.
But, but George, if, if Mary's sitting there with her clicker and she is the only person that lives on 82nd, would that be considered the same as another road with another mine that has 500 residents sitting there clicking?
Every one of those roads has a Mary.
Right. Well, that's the point.
It would have to be adjusted.
I think that should be a criteria.
We're not making light of it, I, that's the point, it's just trying to come up with
A formula.
A formula for that, so.
But somehow, right now we have no limit whatsoever. Right now we have no limit whatsoever.
We put, we put the staff in a, a difficult position, I don't know how they're gonna juggle that one, but
Can you, can you say, can you regulate it by zone? Ag one, so many trips per day for, for a mine, ag?
For the agricultural section?
That, that you can do until you put three mines on one road and then you've gone
But, but it comes back to what are you regulating for? You know, are you regulating for capacity, so the road getting too crowded, or are you regulating for road damage?
Health, safety and welfare.
Health, safety, right. Traffic and nuisance we're regulating. That's why we're called planning and zoning.
Yeah.
Nuisance, regulating.
You're regulating for environmental consideration.
There's no reason not to add that under 10 and that we, as this comes along, we're gonna have to, to, so we don't lose sight of it, but I'm not sure.
Right.
I can't give you the answer to that right now, Bob. I think the, the perception is that it's all of that combined.
Yes.
All of the both.
What, how we deal with that, not knowing how many mines may line up, I'm not, I don't know how, where that goes from here, but anyway.
And, and let me just bring up one point, and you've mentioned this before, that 82nd Avenue is gonna be improved. Right now it's under design, it's gone through the project development or environmental phase, it's in the design phase to go from 510 to six, to State Road 60. So there's gonna be a pretty big volume
Well, then it would change.
Of traffic there pretty soon, not just, not just mining trucks, whether this is five years or eight years or 10 years or 15 years down the road.
Is that on the MPO list, Bob?
That's, that's one of our top priorities, but it's actually funded right now and the design is going on. The next phase will be right away acquisition and then construction and when the money's available, that will occur. So, you know, you, you're gonna be looking at a pretty big volume of traffic
Yeah.
And trucks coming from other sources be, besides mines.
But isn't, but isn't saving about 10 months, 10 years out?
It, it's, it's all a money thing right now. If, if the money's available, it could be done in three years or four years, if money isn't available.
If, if, no one would want to hear this, but we have a, if I'm not mistaken, in the commercial side of life in the county, we have a, we have, in the zoning, we have certain distances requirements for
Set that.
Either banking or, that, for a, a commercial area has to be certain. I'm thinking about the property across the street from Seal Suite where you've got, you can't have two fast food restaurants or an area real close, we've got them spaced out over time.
Right, you have the, the one mile separation between
It's a one mile separation between certain types of property. Is that, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty sure
Is that an avenue possible?
I mean, do we really, do we really want to have three mines in one mile or should the, should we potentially look at another alternative of, of requiring space between mines?
What, what we have is in our neighborhood node criteria, we have spacing requirements and the reason for that is to prevent strip commercial development, allow residential fill in, get residences close to businesses, reduce trip lengths, things like
I was, I
Go ahead.
I think we should go, think about going back to what Bob Adair was talking to about doing the survey of the county, finding out the water issues, but we could find out where are the sand lines and do the planning in ahead. I mean, we've spent $12 million to get a lot of criticism for buying development rights for a ranch. Now we got mines going there and then we got houses there. We've got to, we've got to have the overall plan, I think, where we want to go and put the mines, we, the question came up, aren't we have industrial areas and we need to decide where we want to have these mines and then build the roads for the mines or, and, and I, I just don't see how, the problem is we're mixing houses, we're putting ranch lands and we're putting mines in, in the same, on the same road.
You're, you're correct and I think that's true of every place outside the urban service area and, and it's, and it's an ongoing situation. And, and I can tell you, we've designated for many, many years now agricultural areas, but we've allowed other uses in there. We've allowed residential, we've allowed mining, because where else are you gonna have? I mean, we start talking about where does it make sense to have mines, mining locations. Mines in, in this county, and I was just reporting about 30 and 70 year mines in Palm Beach County, 100 year mines in Citrus County because of the type of material that they're getting, we're not that situation. We're talking 10 year, now granted, it could be a, a number of mines, but 10 year mines, they're, they're temporary in nature in that regard. Not like, not like a, a critical resource area where we say, well, here's where the phosphate is, by god, that's gonna be our mining district. That's, that's, that's not the type of mining situation we have here unless some resource is found like that.
You've got, but you've got, your, the, the mines are gonna be located where the product is.
Where the product is and it's the type of product that's in a lot of different places in our county and I think the critical factor for where mines locate in terms of economics is trucking costs. Where's the, where's the demand? Where, where are they going? We, we've had mines operated, as I said at the very beginning, inside the urban service area and next to occupied residential lots. Why did it work there for years?
Called per yard.
Well, and so then we're back to, then we're back to road conditions, best management practices, that sort of thing, not, hey, it doesn't belong in the urban service area. Well, it worked in the urban service area before.
I think in, to, to give you a target and, and maybe move on, is I would rather look at distance between mines as a criteria in some form or fashion.
Actually, when you refer to the mines that are inside the urban service area next to residential, George just, I made a point there, that's one mine, that's not 400 acres with 10 years per each phase of a mine with two other mines down the road. That was one mine in the middle of a residential area and was managed by Fisher. So you've got the best management practice, but you've got the limit.
If you look at all these golf courses, Bent Pine had three mines go in at one time. There's, we don't lose sight, we don't get mixed up between Coquina and Sand, I mean, and Dur, I mean, we, there's, there's a lot of sand mining possibilities all around the county versus Coquina, which is specific. So I, I think that for simplicity, as much as it is today, that rather than try and preordain some stuff, let's, let's look at the distance between mines and then we'd be looking at traffic counts.
And let me make, let, let me make one other point that Stan reminded me of before. Inside the urban service area, most of the development is coming in in subdivisions that are required to berm or provide
Use most of it.
Some, some kind of noise buffer from major roads. What we're dealing with today are five and 10 acre tracks that developed without any kind of buffer or buring from the road and that's where the problems are occurring and a lot of the people I think we've heard speak. So that the, inside the urban service area, they're actually protecting themselves. I can tell you 58th Avenue has a lot of mining trucks going down it. But most of the projects there are, are not being impacted because they have come in through the subdivision process.
Okay. Last, last, not quite last, we've got the, a note in here to require evaluation of bridge culvert impacts, factoring in a com, cumulative impacts for shared hauling routes and identifying mitigation improvements. That's really alluding to more like seven and eight on a percentage, you know, potentially breaking down the percentages. We keep talking about how to divide up maintenance. All of this, the summary of which is you require that the mining operators annual report document, document compliance with the approved plans, commit conditions. We often forget that every year a mining operator, operator has to come back
Right.
To the county
Renew.
As a renewal and a lot of mistakes can be corrected there or stopped there, so
Right.
Don't, we, we need to be using that tool more, which will be, we'll talk more about in enforcement later on. The one note I had is that, not on here, and you all may have some other notes, is I think that somehow a creation, I agree with the, but I mean, this BNP document or somehow putting to, putting to, putting to writing some of the criteria we've heard about that should be into the process of mining, that I think we can look at, that you can overlay any operation to judge whether it's good or bad should be looked at. I mean, the idea of, we don't have like no air horns, no idling for long periods, no Jake breaks on property, on the property.
No staging of parking.
Right, I mean, there's certain operations, and I think if Chuck could summarize or get his notes, he's probably summarized a good bit of them today. So I think the county, if we have, if they're not going to do it as an industry, the county could have the county BMPs, and that would put in writing us to them what we want to expect.
And I have one more I'd like to say is the hours. Make sure it's Monday through Friday, 7 to 4 o'clock or something?
Those are already in the codes.
Well, no, they're in the code for, they're in the code if you're next to considered residential areas, whether it's subdivisions and or ranchettes. If you're, if you're next to pasture or next to a grove operation, they don't, that does not necessarily apply. And so what you're looking at and talking about is that we should consider hours of operation on a regular basis.
Right. And- There's not many trucks that leave after 4 o'clock anyway, so I don't know if that would be a big impact.
Remember why you're doing it. If you go out on 512 and Lloyd Road, 10 miles out of town, are hours of operation of real importance anymore? Should he be able to run longer and harder? And so it does, it makes a difference when you get closer to residential.
Well, it would be with the application.
Depends on the cows, if they can produce more milk or not.
Oh, right. This could vary from location to location.
Vibration might affect them. The vibration might affect them.
It depends on the application. At the time of the issuing the permit, you say, "These would be your hours specifically."
But it would be, you're not saying that it would be completely regulated as to those times if it was in an area where it would be better for the miner to be able to utilize long hours and there aren't any people out there that would be bothering?
What we may, what we may find is having, and I don't, we've done this, I was, we were talking about the routes, but is having issue that's, I don't know if we go to special exception use or whatever, but you have this listed as potential criteria. So that if you come in and you don't need to have hours, you don't put hours on, but if you have, feel like, we feel like they need hours, then we can put hours. And that's, that would be a criteria, like having a PD, you have that right.
Yeah, I think it's, it's always better to have criteria, you know, specific criteria. I think, you know, in fact, this body initiated the changes that just went into effect within the last year. Again, treating ranchette areas 10 acres or lower sized parcels around, treat it like residential. I don't know that it's not, that it's not working. I can think of some of the mining projects we had out associated with the State Road 60 project. You certainly wouldn't want, I mean, they need to go day and night to get that road built. So there are certainly cases where you certainly don't want to be restricted.
Right. But there are cases that you do want to be.
Suzanne?
Can I just make one more suggestion?
Come up to the mic then. And don't mistake this, if this is the end, meaning the end.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. I'm just wondering if you would be willing to include in the investigative work a repair to the south end of 82nd that is causing us so much struggle? And perhaps that the county has said that the base of that road is destroyed now, and they said that a year and a half ago. If that could be discussed and perhaps maybe the county would rebuild it and divide the billing by the number of mines we have ongoing, and I'm sure they'd be glad to pay for the repairs.
I appreciate your comments, and the answer is no. That's not, that's not in our purview for today, I'm sorry.
No, but you can't, you can't look at repairing the road?
We're doing, the repairing the roads is in here. It's here.
Of 82nd South?
But that's the part we can't look at specifically, because we're going to look at generality.
Okay. Just, but all the, the entire road they mined on is looked at, then we're included? Where they've always run, then aren't, then south end is included?
I think so.
Thank you, thank you.
Is that the law you're in, you're the resident?
Way out of that one.
Okay. I have nothing else. If you all have any other questions, then I'm going to shoot you.
The only issue, Mr. Chairman, is for tonight's meeting.
Right. Do you get to come back?
Maybe a very, maybe a very short meeting, but we talked about before this workshop that people bring their calendars and we try to look at some slots of time over the summer for the next two workshops, maybe June and July. And we could discuss it tonight. In other words, just bring your calendars tonight so that everybody just kind of has